All right. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome. Today is Wednesday, November 13, 2024. This is the regularly scheduled Board of Trustees meeting for the Long Beach Community College District Board of Trustees. My name is Vivian Malauulu. I am your board president, and I am calling this meeting to order at 4:30 p.m. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Here.
Herlinda Chico. Vivian Malauulu.
Here.
Uduwakcho Entuk. Sunny Zia.
Here.
Item 1.3, Public Comments on Closed-Session Items. Madam Secretary, do we have any comments? None received. Okay. We've got one item, item 1.4 in closed session. This is conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8, the property at 3965 Clark Avenue in Long Beach, known as the Frontier Site. Negotiators are Dr. Mike Munoz, Superintendent President, Long Beach Community College District, Constance Schrint Esquire, Atkinson, Anderson, Loia Rudd, and Romo, and Jonathan De Dorian, Newmark Group, Inc. The party is the district under negotiation instructions to negotiators concerning price and terms of payment for the purchase of the property. At this time, we will adjourn into closed session, and we will be back at 5:30 sharp to reconvene for open session. Thank you.
Everyone, if you could please take your seats. We will begin our meeting in approximately 30 seconds. All right, everyone, come on in and welcome. I like to begin our meetings on time, and it is 5:30 sharp. This is in an effort to be respectful of everyone's time. Thank you. Good evening and welcome. Today is Wednesday, November 13, 2024. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Long Beach Community College District Board of Trustees. My name is Vivian Malauulu. I am your board president, and I would like to call this meeting to order at 5:31 p.m. We will begin with item 2.2 on the agenda, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. I have asked one of our guests in the audience to please join us at the podium and lead us in the flag salute. This is Mr. Barry Gadston, First Lieutenant in the United States Marine Corps, and he is here as a guest, and he also has an agenda item, which we will learn about shortly. Mr. Gadston, please lead us in the flag salute. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gadston, and in honor of Veterans Day, thank you for your service. Item 2.3 is our land acknowledgement. Long Beach City College acknowledges our presence on the traditional ancestral land of the Gabrielino Tongwa peoples. This land remains unceded territory. We acknowledge the painful history of genocide and forced removal from this territory. Long Beach City College honors and respects the Gabrielino Tongwa ancestors and their connection to this land. Item 2.4, Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Virginia Baxter.
Here.
Herlinda Chico. Vivian Malauulu.
Here.
Uduakjo Untuk. Sanie Zia.
Here.
Student trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you. Item 2.5, report on closed session items. I do have a report out. We had one item for closed session. The Board of Trustees convened in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8 and discussed with its real property negotiator's price and terms of payment associated with the potential acquisition of the 3965 East Lou Davis Street property. The Board of Trustees voted five to zero, with zero abstaining, to approve moving forward with preparing a letter of offer to acquire the 3965 East Lou Davis Street property. Roll call vote was as follows: the eyes, trustee Chico, trustee Baxter, trustee Malauulu, trustee Zia, and trustee Untuk. Item 2.6 on the agenda, public comments on agenda items. We do have two public comments on agenda items. The first one will be on item 12.1. This is Kurt Borstein. Kurt, if you're in the room, please step to the podium. Welcome.
Thank you. Well, I am Kurt Borstein, and I'm here to ask you to hold off on approving these committee mentor recommendations. The laws that govern this Citizen Oversight Committee and its membership are clearly defined in the California Educational Code, and in the case of the Bonafide Taxpayer Association Representative, California Code calls for just that, a real taxpayer association member, such as the California Taxpayers Association or the Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association. It appears that the college has made no attempt to solicit candidates from such bona fide groups. I checked with them. Instead, you're advancing the director, a director, from the city's mayor's office, and that has the potential as coming across as selecting an institutional insider. I don't want to go so far as to say that's having a fox guarding the hen house, but it's not in the spirit of the independent oversight that's called for in the California Ed Code. Now, in the case of the community member post, I can only speak for myself, because I have personally applied on three separate occasions to serve on this committee, and I've never even been extended the courtesy to be spoken to about my credentials. So I will use tonight to give you a brief overview. I'm now retired, but I had a 31-year career in higher education and local government administration, and during that time, I had the privilege of overseeing a few of California State University's most physically prudent bond finance construction and renovation projects. I've also had experience with bond refinancing, capital construction delivery systems, and FFNE projects. Frankly, I'm qualified to serve, and I've been passed over and passed over, and I'm assuming other qualified candidates have as well not been given proper consideration. And that's not to disparage any of the fine gentlemen that are being presented to you here tonight, but it's in the spirit of just a fair, open, and transparent process. Now, should you decide to delay on these appointments today to ensure that a fair process exists for your administration, which leads to recommendations, I would strongly encourage you to familiarize yourself with the California Association of Bond Oversight Committees. Their website features guidance in developing good, independent committees, which are compliant with the letter and spirit of California law. And doing so will not only help City College make effective use in managing these significant construction resources that have been entrusted to the college, including almost $1 billion that happened in November, so that's a lot of money. It will also help you avoid the potential for negative media scrutiny or costly legal challenges that will surely follow if you don't. Now, I've already mentioned that I wish the other candidates nothing but the highest of respect, but I would like to suggest that the administration...
Thank you, Mr. Kurt Borstein. You've reached your time.
Well, thank you for your...
We appreciate your time being here today.
Thank you for the three minutes. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Paul Kaminsky, Chief Executive Officer of the Long Beach Community College District Foundation. Welcome, Mr. Kaminsky.
Good afternoon. Oh, it's evening. Wow. Just wanted to make a presentation to Herlinda from the foundation. It says, "Long Beach City College Foundation in appreciation for dedicated service and support to Herlinda Chico, Long Beach City College trustee." So from the foundation, just wanted to say thank you for all your service. I remember watching the Zoom meeting when you were sworn in and you were so proud with your parents, and so we wish you all the best. So anyway, I just wanted to say that. Okay?
Thank you so much, Paul. Thank you for being here. All right, any additional public comments on agenda items? Okay, we're going to move on to item 2.7 on the agenda, which is reordering the agenda. Are there any requests to reorder the agenda? All right, I've got two. Item 7.1 is under the Section 7 of the agenda, which is Board of Trustees, and we do have special recognition to trustee Chico. This is her last board meeting, so I'd like to reorder the agenda to move item 7.1 up. And I'd also like to reorder the agenda to move item 12.1 up, that is, the appointments to the Citizens Oversight Committee. Are there any objections to that? All right, trustee Chico, even though seven is ahead of 12, is it all right with you if we handle item 12 first? All right, sounds good. I have a feeling item seven might take a little bit longer. I know you've got some special guests in the audience. All right, well, thank you very much. So now we're going to move on to... And Dr. Munoz, would you like those items moved up to ahead of Section 3? Shall we do those items now, or do you want to move on to Section 3 on the agenda? Shall we do those items now, or do you want to move on to Section 3 on the agenda now? All right, so we're going to move forward with item 12.1 on the agenda, and then we will go to item 7.1, and then we will return to Section 3 on the agenda, for those of you following closely at home. Item 12.1, appointments to the Citizens Oversight Committee. I need a motion and a second that the Board of Trustees confirm the appointment of Paul Baragan Monge and Barry Gadston for a term of November 14th, 2024, to June 30th, 2026, to the Citizens Oversight Committee, COC, as submitted. Item details, documents may be viewed for the benefit of the public on Board Docs. And just to clarify, the applications were reviewed by LBCCD Board of Trustees President, myself, and Superintendent President, Dr. Munoz, resulting in a recommendation to appoint Paul Baragan Monge to fill the vacant seat representing a Bonafide Taxpayers Association for a term from November 14th, 2024, through June 30th, 2026, and Barry Gadston to fill the vacant seat representing a community-at-large member for a term from November 14th, 2024, through June 30th, 2026. And again, both of their bios, qualifications are attached on Board Docs.
Move approval?
I've got a motion by trustee Untuk, second by trustee Chico. Any discussion on the item? Trustee Zia's hand was up, and then trustee Baxter.
I want to thank Kurt for being here. Thank you for expressing your perspective and really highlighting some of the concerns. I was not aware of it personally, and I don't have anything against the folks who are being proposed, but your concerns are very valid, and I'm not going to step over it. Therefore, I will be voting no on this item.
Trustee Baxter?
I'd like to note if Mr. Baragan Monge listed that he was a member of the tax group like Howard Jarvis. Did he list that he was a member?
I don't have his application in front of me. My understanding of the past process is when folks apply, we look at the vacancies. We create a grid to look at what part of the district they represent. We've had an over-concentration of folks representing a certain part of Long Beach and not representing another part of Long Beach, or not just Long Beach, but even our district, Lakewood, Singan Hill, et cetera. And so that's what we've looked at, and then those that are put forwarded, if they need to be a member, they join a particular taxpayers' association.
Oh, okay. So is he willing to join?
Yeah, my understanding-- I did not have the conversation with him. Mike Gregorick's team reached out to him, but my understanding is that he is fulfilling the taxpayer association, and he is a member. He would have to be a member in order for this appointment.
Okay, as long as he's going to join, that's fine with me then. Thank you.
Thank you. VP Gregorick, would you like to weigh in on that? Would you like to weigh in on that as far as the joining of the taxpayer association for one of the candidates being appointed today?
Yeah, I heard the conversation. Most of-- When we look at those first, because my staff looks at them first, they have to put on their application that they're part of the association, or some association. There doesn't have to be any specific one that I'm aware of, and if they put that down, we take that for their word. And we looked at it and passed those on for further review, and it seems to me it's a very fair process.
Thank you. Tris-- Yes?
Just as a point of clarification, so there's no misunderstanding, they have to be a taxpayer-- They have to be-- At least, my understanding is they have to be part of a taxpayers' association at the time of their appointment. So they can join simultaneously with their application. They don't have to be one for five years before they receive the appointment. If they receive the appointment, they need to be part of a taxpayer's association.
And if this gentleman doesn't join, is there any repercussion?
He fails to join, then he would not meet the qualifications and then would not be able to continue--
Okay, thank you.
Correct. Trustee Untuk?
Yeah, thank you. Just want to clarify, for the record, there are multiple ways to join a bona fide taxpayer association. If you look up an Ed Code, it's either a community or neighborhood association, a business improvement district, a city commission, or other city-sponsored group. It does not only have to be the Howard Jarvis Tax Association, even that is one way to do it. So I'm supporting this measure and following the recommendation, staff.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? I would like to add that this was my second time in the eight years that I've served on this board, being a part of the Citizens Oversight Committee appointment process, and each time, all candidates who apply are carefully vetted by staff, by the Vice President of Finance and Facilities and Business, the CBO of the district, before they come to us for appointment, before they come to us for the final appointment. They are carefully vetted, their application is reviewed. It is my understanding that there are conversations had with staff if there are any questions or any items on their application packet needs clarification. By the time Dr. Munoz and I got the finalists, they'd already been vetted. I am proud to say that we did have some really good candidates this time. I know that in recent years, sometimes we had to extend the application process multiple times, but we had great candidates. I'm not particularly familiar with Mr. Paul Baragan Monge. I know who he is. I don't know him very well. I am proud to be able to, if approved, appoint Mr. Barry Gadston, who you met. He led us in the flag salute. He is a West Long Beach resident, military graduate student at Cal State Long Beach, and the fact that he is-- And forgive me for saying this, Mr. Gadston-- So young and so eager to serve the community, I think, is a testament to what we do here at Long Beach City College, to be able to encourage people from all walks of life to want to serve. So I'm proud of that, and I do hope that, you know, the board is able to make that approval based on the recommendation of staff. If there are no additional comments, Madam Secretary, we will take a roll call vote, please. Do we need a roll call for this, since it's got the bond? Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Advisory vote, student trustee Gonzalez?
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Herlinda Chico?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Udoakjo Untuk?
Nay.
Thank you. Motion carries. Congratulations to Mr. Paul Baragan Monge and Mr. Barry Gadston on your appointment. We look forward to your service for the next two years on the Citizens Oversight Committee. And now we will go to item 7.1. The first thing we're going to do is play a video for you, and then we will move on to the rest of the item.
So as much as we have progressed over these years and that we've made over the last century, we still have many barriers to break. You know, we can all advance, in large part because a lot of remarkable women have paved the way. They mentored us and built a community among women to lift us all up as we climb. And by example, we can take our sisters with us, and that's because empowered women empower women. We raise the pride flag because we want to show our appreciation, our love, our support for all communities. I'm proud to represent the Long Beach Community College District Board of Trustees to kick off our college's very first Filipino-American History Month celebration.
At Long Beach City College, our stated mission is to provide equitable student learning and achievement, academic excellence, and workforce development, to ensure that this is a place where everyone can thrive.
The community college, it's so important. Education is incredibly critical, and it's our responsibility to get more books in the hands of our youth and help them be prepared.
At Long Beach City College, we're honored to support our veterans who served our country so proudly.
You know, the opening of Building M is not just a celebration of a new facility, but it's a testament to our commitment to provide students with the latest technology and tools to empower their learning.
And always remember, when you overcome your obstacle and you break down a door, don't forget to hold that door open for your sisters coming on in behind you. Welcome them and show them around, because there's enough space for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Munoz. Going back to the agenda, item 7.1, we will open the floor to trustee comments, comments from the audience, attendees, and then we have some presentations. We will also take some photos, and then we will have a brief 10-minute recess where we have some refreshments for you, and then we will return to the agenda. So hopefully, we will-- That'll flow smoothly. I would like to open up the floor to trustees, my colleagues on the board, for any comments. Trustee Baxter?
Yes, I'd like to say I want to thank Herlinda for always speaking her mind, but in a very nice way, and she has tremendous experience in dealing with the college and the board, and I really appreciate all you've done to help us, and I wish you the very best on your future.
Trustee Untuk?
Yeah, thank you. I also want to thank trustee Chico for your four years of service. You've been a dedicated public servant, more than two decades of local and county service, an impactful leader. You've served as vice president, as president. You've led initiatives on campus, and always with the intention of being inclusive. You've been a champion for change. You know, we got to go to New York together and present at the National Conference on the Framework of Reconciliation. We had a great experience in that show that we went together to-- That we have to talk about later, but it was-- Always been a champion for change. Community engagement, you started the process of bringing the entire campus community into our parades, our students, our employee resource groups, whether it's Day of the Dead, Pride parades. We didn't do that before. We just had, you know, the boat and four or five people in the boat, and, you know, now we have 100 people marching together, and it's really a great, great effort in community engagement. And then just your legacy you leave behind. We're going to continue to raise the pride flag on Pride Month. We're going to-- You know, the Boys and Girls Club that provides evening childcare services to our students, who's really helped women of color, mothers of color on campus succeed academically. Nobody else has programs like that, and it wouldn't have been possible without your support and leadership. So thank you for everything.
I would like to echo what my colleagues on the board have said, trustee Baxter and trustee Untuk. Trustee Chico, I am going to miss you on the board. It has been a pleasure and a privilege serving with you. You are as real as they come. You are raw, genuine. You do the right thing, even if it is uncomfortable. You do the right thing, even if it is difficult. You do the right thing, even if it is not popular, and that, to me, is a testament of leadership, and it's also a testament to the people that I see sitting in front of me on the front row, which I've had the great privilege of getting to know over the past few years, which is your family. Thank you very much for your dedication to the district, and thank you for your commitment to our students. Being a trustee or being an elected official is really difficult, because you all don't see everything. You don't hear everything. You don't read everything. You're not privy to all the things that we are. The only thing you see are the decisions that are made. That's it. You see the vote. You see the aftermath, but you don't see the things that lead up to it. And I've been in the trenches with trustee Chico. I've sat in closed session with her. I've been to the meetings, the subcommittee meetings, the committee meetings, and I've seen her roll up her sleeves. I've seen her on the front line. I've seen her advocate for students, advocate for faculty, advocate for staff. I've seen her fight for the community in ways that you might not see. So I see you, and I will miss you, and I'm proud of you, and the four years that you and I served together will always be remembered. So thank you very much. I know that we have some special guests in the audience who did not necessarily complete speaker cards, but at this time, I'd like to open up the podium to you if you'd like to come up. And if you don't mind, because we do have a board meeting to run after this, if you can line up and keep it moving, that would be amazing. And we are holding everyone to the two-minute public speaker mark, so please step forward and join us on the mic, and after all the speakers have gone, then we will have some presentations to trustee Chico, and she will say a few words. So please come on up.
Good evening, Superintendent President Munoz, Board of Trustees, the excellent staff here. My name is Dorian Bonner. I have the honor and privilege of serving in the office of our mayor, the Honorable Rex Richardson, who regrets that he could not attend tonight, but he did want to say thank you very much for your many years of service. We have a proclamation from the mayor that I would like to read now, if I may. Perfect. So whereas Herlinda Chico is a longtime resident of Long Beach and active community advocate, trustee Chico is a third-generation public servant and has 20 years of legislative and public affairs experience, who has attended Rio Hondo Community College and transferred to California State University San Bernardino, where she earned a bachelor's degree in communications, and whose dedicated community service has been recognized by several Long Beach organizations, including the Long Beach Branch NAACP, the president's award, the Long Beach Gay and Lesbian Pride, Centro Cha, the Cambodian Association of America, Assembly Member Patrick O'Donnell's Woman of Distinction Award, and trustee Chico has also served on several important boards and commissions, including Long Beach City College's Student Housing Selection Panel, the City College Basic Needs Task Force, the Job Fair Planning Committee, the Parks and Recreation Commission with the city, the Conservation Corps of Long Beach Advisory Board, co-chair of the mayor's Animal Care and Visioning Task Force, Chair of the Watershed Conservation Authority, and is a representative on the Gateway City Council of Government. So quite a resume, all right? And she was also the first person of color to be elected to the seat and the first Mexican-American woman to be elected to the Long Beach Community College Board of Trustees. Mayor Rex Richardson thanks Herlinda Chico for her unwavering dedication and commitment to service, and so do I. Thank you so much, and we're really proud to have worked with you, of course.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. Let me just say, my name is Mario Cordaro, CEO of the Port of Long Beach, but a resident of the city of Long Beach, and I don't live too far from here, Jenny, as you know. I just wanted to take the opportunity real quick. Obviously, you hear all the accolades. There's nothing for me to add, other than the fact that as a Latino, Hispanic, or Mexican-American, I'm so proud of you that as a former adjunct professor in political science, you are a mentor to the minority kids, and for that matter, all students at this campus, not only in terms of ethnicity, but in terms of lifestyle. We've come so-- We've taken so many steps as a society to have acceptance of all. So I just wanted to make sure that I certainly appreciate that, and I do hope, Herlinda, this is not the last of your public involvement, because you are a passionate person, and you represent the Latina community well in terms of a mentor, but the important thing is you represent everybody, no matter what their ethnicity or what their lifestyle is that they've chosen. And last, I can't help but say to your parents, what a great job you did on having your daughter not only step up to the plate and be a leader, be a spokesperson, but have the courage to address the difficult issues that sometimes many people don't. So thank you for your professionalism, your integrity, and again, love you.
Good afternoon, Board and Superintendent President and Chair. My name is David Ochoa. I am the senior district representative for State Senator Tom Umberg, and on the senator's behalf, in the California State Senate, we'd like to present trustee Chico with the certificate of recognition for her work with the Board of Trustees, and I'd also like to personally thank Herlinda, because when I first got involved in all of this crazy business, it was trustee Chico who welcomed me, who encouraged me, who was always very supportive of me, and I have seen nothing but the same from you while you have been on the board, and it's those types of people who always have the biggest impact on the people who they are responsible for. So thank you on behalf of the Senate and on behalf of myself for all of your work.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Elijah Sims. I'm the president of the Management Association, and I'm the director of the Long Beach College Promise. On behalf of the Management Association, we just want to say thank you for all of your hard work and your contributions to the college. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And then on a personal note, you may not remember this, but you're responsible for one of my favorite-- One of my favorite student memories. You connected me with some folks from the-- You connected me with some folks from the YMCA who then connected me with some students from Carmelito's Housing. And we did a tour of the campus. It was an amazing day. It was an amazing tour. The students got to see many of our programs. They ate at the bistro. And one of the last things we did was we stopped in Building A, and there's a courtyard. In Building A, there's a large rose planter. And one of the students looked at it and said, "Wow, you guys always have the best stuff." And then he said, "Can I take some of those?" I was taken aback by the question. No one's ever asked me if they could take the flowers from the rose planter. But I was so curious that I said, "What would you do with them?" And he said, "I would give them to my mom." So this is where the story ends because I'm not going to tell you what happened next, especially not with my boss here. But I hope that student's mom was happy that evening. So thank you for that.
My name is Carmen Betis, and I'm smart enough not to follow that. That was wonderful. I don't have many titles, but I do have a lot of former titles. And one of them was the former Latina, first Latina for the Harbor Commission. And I met this young woman that worked for several people that I knew, a city councilwoman, a supervisor. I was chief deputy for her daddy. And I was just taken aback. Did we agree on everything? Hell, no. Oh, sorry. Heck, no. But we always knew where she was. And the one thing that she has said over and over, "I open doors." And one of the things that all of us have to realize is that the doors have to be open for everybody, not just those that we want, but for everybody. And when you have someone like Herlinda Chico that continues to say, "Give me your hand, and I'll bring you in the door," we're very, very lucky. On behalf of the Mujeres de Long Beach, on behalf of Latinas in Long Beach, I have to tell you, we are full of pride. We're sorry that it didn't work out for us, but you've heard it before, and I know you're going to hear it from me a lot. You're not done. We're going to continue and continue and continue. And I thank you for everything you do. Good luck. Love you, too.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. My name is Jeanette Christian. I'm the current county deputy for LA County Supervisor Janice Hahn. And literally, Herlinda opened this door so I could be here today. I will say the last year, I've been in this little ear, has been walking in Herlinda's footsteps without her even knowing it. And you've really just built such a strong network of people who count on you, who love you, who look up to you. At every email I open or anywhere I go, I always hear, "Well, Herlinda said," or "What Herlinda did." This is what, you know... And, you know, you've been so busy the last few months, but you still respond to my texts when I'm kind of stumped on something or I'm like, "Okay, who is this? What do I do?" And you've always just take time to mentor me. And I just really appreciate who you are. And I never thought I'd be filling your footsteps, but I definitely stand on your shoulders. And I appreciate all the doors you've opened for me and the way you've obviously led this community and served the people of Long Beach and LA County. So on behalf of LA County, thank you for all you've done. This big scroll that is framed is coming. But in the meantime, here you go. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Cory Allen. I am Herlinda's roommate. And to the point that President Malauulu was making, a lot of times, the work that these folks do as elected officials is hard work. And you don't always get to see the behind-the-scenes, which includes me holding a Zoom light to make sure she's sworn in and has the right lighting, and includes me swatting away cats to make sure they don't get in the frame. I know. Well, there's more than one. So, you know, we've got a lot of work to do. But I also just want to say thank you to Herlinda. Many folks will know this. We also go by the stage name of Long Beach's Will and Grace. Because as a young queer kid, Herlinda was one of the first people that I gravitated towards in the city of Long Beach and who not only served as a friend, but as a mentor, as a comfort for me to grow and to do the great things that I've been able to do in my life. And so it's no surprise that to hear all the accolades of the amazing things that she's been able to do in such a short time here at the Community College. And so on behalf of myself, and I'm sure your family that's here, too, congratulations and thank you for always being the giving soul that you are to all of us.
Hi, everyone. My name is Christopher. I'm here on behalf of the Office of Congressman Robert Garcia. I really can't follow the nice words that has been said about you. You truly are a great person. I've had the fortune of knowing you for about a year, and I know what amazing relationship you have with the congressman. But I just want to reiterate what a beloved person you are in the Long Beach community, and you will be missed. But I know that you'll still be around. But I wanted to present you with this certificate. And again, thank you so much for what you've done, and thank you for your time.
Thank you to all of our speakers. Now, we do have a presentation for trustee Chico that I would like to present. And then we will hear from trustee Chico. So several of us on the board got trustee Chico a really nice flower, different assorted arrangements of flowers, and some personal gifts because we know how much she will miss us. And we know she will be tuning into our board meetings at the edge of her seat on YouTube every month. But we also have, on behalf of the district, this beautiful commemorative, you know, trophy glass plaque. And it says, "In appreciation of your commitment and dedication to Long Beach City College, the Long Beach Community College District Board of Trustees thanks you for your outstanding service." So thank you, trustee Chico. And this is on behalf of the district. Your cats will love all the flowers you're bringing home. Oh, I'm sorry. Dr. Munoz, would you like to speak or have her go? Okay, go ahead. All right.
I know so many wonderful things have been already shared and expressed tonight, but I just want to personally extend my deepest gratitude and appreciation to you for your service, to our college, to our amazing faculty, classified professionals, managers, and our students. I also wanted to say on a really personal note, thank you for believing in me. You know, you, along with this board, put your faith in me to serve both as an interim superintendent president and now as the permanent superintendent president in a very challenging time as we were going through COVID. And there was a lot of uncertainty. And so I just appreciate, you know, you putting your faith in me because this really... I think folks know this is, for me, probably the most important role I've had in my life professionally. And I take it very seriously. And I just want you to say thank you for that. What I'm going to take with me from this experience of working for you and with you is, you know, just the passion for our community. I have always seen myself as a community-minded person, but you've opened up my eyes to community engagement in ways that I didn't necessarily see before. You know, you don't know what you don't know. And I think the testament of being out there in the community and walking in those parades and the impact that has on people and, you know, to look a young child in the eyes and talk about college and letting them know that LBCC is accessible and here for them. You have been, along with the rest of the board, a driver of that. And I just want to say thank you. And then also for our conjoined passions for serving student parents. You, you know, have been very open and candid about your experience of being the daughter of young parents. And myself, as a single parent raising my young daughter, I think we found a lot of connection in that experience. And to be able... I'm getting emotional. To be able to advance, you know, the Boys and Girls Club on this campus, I remember when I brought the idea to you. You were board president. And there was a lot of folks that thought that that wasn't the right approach because of liabilities and exposure and all these different things. And it took, I think, a very bold board president to empower me to be able to say, "We are going to move forward in this way to serve our students because this is what they need." And so thank you for that.
Thank you. So trustee Chico is going to make a couple of introductions.
Well, actually, the staffer mode just came in. And I saw, you know, our city auditor, Laura Dowd, there. And as a good staffer, I have to acknowledge our citywide elected official, Laura Dowd. So thank you so much for being here, Laura. Thank you. Yeah, once a staffer, always a staffer. This has been an incredible journey. It's hard to believe that it's been almost or that it's been four years and that we've accomplished so much. I was elected in the midst of a global pandemic. My swearing-in took place at the start of a virtual board meeting that ran till 1:00 a.m. Yeah, remember those days? Because it happened often. As a board, we've come a long way from those days. And I think today that we are a more resilient and effective board. Still flawed because we're humans, but undeniably stronger. It's been a privilege to work alongside my colleagues, to expand supportive services for our students. That has always been my passion. My driving force is representing our students. In fact, I said that when I was running for this seat, that my background is not in higher education. My background is in the community. And I see a void there that we need to... Or not a void, but we need to strengthen those ties. I know that we've worked on a lot of things, and I'm really proud of that. We improved employee wages. We ensured that every student feels seen, valued, and supported, including our students on Catalina Island. Yay, Catalina! Because it's part of my district, and oftentimes, they're forgotten. But I don't let anybody forget about them, so... You know, we've turned this board, we've turned a lot of ideas into actions and that they're going to have a lot of positive impact over generations. As I came onto this board, I really want to thank trustee Antuck and President Malauulu for really helping guide me and being supportive. And I know they had been working on this board really hard for a long time, but really welcomed me in and showed me the ropes and empowered me, right? Even though I was the newest one on the board, they never discarded my ideas. And I appreciate that so much. Dr. Munoz, from our very first professional meeting, we connected immediately. Our life paths and experiences paralleled in so many ways. Thank you for being an incredible leader, thought partner, change-maker, and friend. LBCC is better for having you. And I know that you're going to help take care of our students as we kind of enter some uncertain times. I also want to thank your remarkable cabinet, incredible professionals up here, as well as the members of the academic senate, classified senate, the LBCC FA, AFT, CHA, all the student groups, the affinity groups, and every LBCC employee who strives to create this inclusive learning environment because it takes all of us. We've become a national model for what we have been doing. And that's something that the entire district should be proud of. When I first ran to represent Area 4, I did so because of my strong connection to the community, especially our underrepresented communities. My goal was simple: do the work, move the needle, make tough decisions with integrity, and seize every opportunity to make a real difference. It has been my profound honor to serve you, to serve Area 4 as your elected representative. And I'm grateful for the trust that you placed in me. We set out to strengthen our community ties and transform ideas into actions that truly make an impact, and we did that. We can't go anywhere now. If we have a parade in Long Beach, LBCC rolls deep, and everybody knows that. We have a presence. We get people chanting, "LBCC." We have a presence. It is incredible. And that's because of the work of the team here at Long Beach City College. I hope our residents on Catalina Island know that our work continues and that I'll always advocate for them. But I know that they're going to be in really good hands. On a personal note, being elected to the Board of Trustees at Long Beach City College, a Hispanic-serving institution, has been particularly meaningful to me because representation matters. As the first person of color ever elected to represent Area 4, the first Mexican-American woman ever to be elected to this board, I understand how much it means to our students to see themselves in leadership roles. Many students have approached me to tell me about the similarities they see. They saw themselves in me, and that is a valuable connection and a beautiful gift I will cherish forever. So to each and every one of our students, I want you to know that you brought me more fulfillment than I could have ever imagined, both professionally and personally. So as I step aside today, I do so with the confidence knowing that the legacy of progress we've built will continue. Part of being a strong leader is knowing when it's time to open the door for others. And I'm thrilled to pass the torch to Dr. Inet Morton, an experienced and dedicated professional in higher education who I was really happy to support and who will serve our community well. So I know that we have a lot of work to do. We're going to do this. We're going to do this. One other thing I'd like to add before I wrap up, I want to recognize my family. I've spoken before about my teenage parents, who defy the odds and work tirelessly to ensure that my brother and I had the opportunities that we may not have had otherwise. So, to my mom, Tina, right here in the front row, my dad, Nick, right here in the front row, thank you so much for supporting and loving me and for not trying to stop me when I set my goals really big. And I also, I want to thank LBCC as well for being here for my family. You all know, many of you know, that I lost my brother two years ago. And the family, my LBCC family was so supportive. I had to, you know, I'm the only sibling left, he was my only sibling, so I had to be there for my parents and my brother's five kids. And that's why I do what I do. The fact that I get to introduce my brother's two youngest, Ella and Asher, please stand. So I get up every morning and I work really hard to change the world so you can live in a better world. I love you both. Go ahead and have a seat. And then Cory Ellen, I love Cory. I will take credit for everything Cory does, and now I'm going to take credit for everything Mike does. Like, I mean, Cory really has been a pillar in my life since he was 19 years old. We are actually more like Jack and Karen, if you know Will and Grace, but we're funny, we're the fun ones. But thank you so much, my friend, for your loyalty, for your friendship. You're my family. And again, thank you so much for just this opportunity. I look around this room and I see people that I've worked with and we've done incredible work for our students. Keep doing that work. And I'm not going anywhere. I'm still going to be doing the work. My number is out there. Call me. I know what to do, so give me a call. On that note, thank you all so very much. It has been my honor and my privilege to serve in this capacity. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Chico. Before we adjourn momentarily, just a brief adjournment for, we're going to take a 10-minute recess, and we do have refreshments set up for you across the way in the courtyard. We are going to ask those of you who would like to take a photo with trustee Chico to come here, just underneath the dais, and we'll take a photo. But before I do, I would like to make one additional introduction, a very special person in the audience. And it's very fitting that as we bid farewell to trustee Chico, we also bid hello and welcome to trustee-elect Dr. Enette Morton. So, there you go. Thank you, Dr. Morton. And we would like to invite all of you to come back on December 18th. Dr. Morton and I will be sworn in here, the same time at our regularly scheduled board meeting. So we're going to take a brief 10-minute recess. It is 6:21. Let's plan on hitting the gavel and starting, let's just do 6:35, just to keep it clean. Thank you.
Thank you.
On the agenda, which is welcome of new faculty. Trustee Chico, we still have you on this board. All right, everyone, thank you. We appreciate all of the excitement and enthusiasm for trustee Chico, but she still has work to do for a couple more hours. The after-party is after the meeting. All right, item 3.1 on the agenda, and for the record, we are reconvening at 6:30, 9:00 p.m. Item 3.1, we would like to welcome, warm welcome, our new faculty. This is an information item only, and recognition, Dr. O. Lee Douglas will introduce Dr. Heather Dai, Faculty Professional Development Coordinator, who will introduce LBCC's 2024 new faculty. Dr. Douglas?
Thank you, Board President Malulu, members of the board, Dr. Munoz, and LBCC family. This evening is my pleasure to welcome our incredibly talented group of nineteen full-time tenure-track faculty. This amazing group of individuals are the best of the best in the cream of the crop. Each of them brings a wealth of experience, demonstrated record of serving students of diverse backgrounds, and a commitment to student success. We're very excited to have them as a part of the LBCC family. Introducing our new faculty this evening is Dr. Heather Dai. Dr. Dai is a professor in the Life Science Department and serves as our Faculty Professional Development Coordinator. Dr. Dai, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Douglas. Good evening, Board President Malulu, Board Trustees Baxter, Chico, Intuck, Zia, Superintendent President Dr. Munoz, and executive members. I have the honor of introducing the Notorious Nineteen cohort. Before introducing the group, I want to share a brief summary of the new faculty activities that we've done thus far. The group was warmly greeted by our executive team, Dr. Munoz and VP Douglas, during their new faculty orientation in July. Over the past three months, the nineteen new faculty members have gauged in College Culture Fridays that have tapped into their construction skills when they built a structure from spaghetti with their mentors, engaged in pedagogy exploration with the reading faculty from the Center for Teaching and Learning, and immersed themselves in the college culture by meeting with union leaders and academic senate leaders and faculty who shared on topics that include OER, reading your load sheet, and conflict resolution. The group was introduced to our deans during a brunch meet-and-greet, and the deans shared about their areas focusing on student success accomplishments. Additionally, the new faculty have been supported in their development of their portfolios and discussions in ways to fulfill their contractual obligations. VP Corral spent a morning with the group, sharing his personal educational and career journey, and encouraged the faculty to continue their career development. You probably thought I forgot about you. Next week, the group will be visiting the Los Cerritos Wetlands, a field trip hosted by our Life Science faculty, Professor Nigro. It's a component of his marine biology course. During this trip, the faculty will also partake in a restoration project. The group will close the semester with a campus scavenger hunt of the Trades, Technology, and Community Learning Campus. At this time, I'd like to introduce each of the members of the Notorious Nineteen. This cohort, as Dr. Douglas shared, is very enthusiastic. They're driven, and they're very talented, and they represent the future of our college. So I'm pleased to introduce them now. Would you please stand as I read your name? Virginia Baez. I'm not a good multitasker, but I'm going to try really hard. Priscilla Caraveo. They don't know these fun facts. It was a surprise for them, too. Carlos Avantes. Ellen Chai. Richter Kluff. Amanda Goverubias. Tanya Crane. Brandon Douglas. Dorian Eskamia. Art Garcia. Joan Lee. Giselle Lopez. Sonia Mellon. Mai T. Pham. Jorge Rios. Jeff Rivers. Erica Santizo. Kamisha Sullivan. And Robbie Williams. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dai, and welcome once again to Notorious Nineteen? I don't know. I think we could find another word, because notorious, I don't know. You all seem pretty good, those quotes there. Good for you. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to item 3.2 on the agenda, which is a resolution for Native American History Month. I need a motion and a second that the Board of Trustees adopt Resolution Number 111324A, recognizing Native American History Month as submitted. I've got a motion by trustee Chico.
Second.
Second by trustee Zia. Any discussion on that item? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and now we've got two guests in the audience who are going to address. Please join us at the podium. They're going to address all of us. Justin Mendez, member of the Native American Employee Resource Group, and Ezra Lobianco, Chair, Native American and Indigenous Peoples Student Club. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ezra Lobianco. I'm the Chair of the Native American Indigenous Student Collaborative. Last fall, we campaigned for the Indigenous Peoples, the recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day. We received over one hundred signatures in less than a week. As we accept this resolution and take this next step beyond the land acknowledgement, I hope that we can continue to keep the best interests of our local nations, Tongva, Tatavim, Shumash, and Ajoshmin, at heart, as well as our animal and plant relatives. It is with the support of the former Native, first former Native trustee, student trustee Emma Manetta, and the second Native trustee, G. Gonzalez, as well as the support from the Native Employee Resource Group, especially Justin Mendez, Icel Marine, and Dr. Eric Becerra, that I stand before the board and ask that you continue to support us. Though statistically invisible, the strength of our community outweighs the numbers. I would like to ask that we all keep in mind that Indigenous peoples are not limited to this continent and that we continue to walk with care and respect for our relations beyond this continent. Finally, with the continued construction on this campus, we remain mindful and hopeful that proper care and respect will be given to the land, the ancestors, and the local Indigenous community. Thank you.
Thank you both for being here. Now, we're going to move on to Section Four on the agenda, item 4.1. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. We do have a resolution to present to you. And what we'll do, since this is the only one, is we'll go ahead and take a very brief, two-minute break to take a photo with the board here, so please join us if you are a member of our Native American population, faculty, staff, students, for this photo. Thank you. Thank you once again. Section Four on the agenda, we have our standing reports. Item 4.1, ASB President Report. Shamanie Karas, come on up.
Good evening, ST members of the Board of Trustees, Superintendent Dr. Mike Munoz, faculty, staff, and my fellow students. As usual, I have a lot to report, but I'm going to take it easy today. On behalf of the student body, we would like to thank the scholarship team and the LBCC Foundation and our generous donors for the continued support to students. Also, great news for all students and our evening students in particular. Thanks to the LBCC Business Service Team, Bob Raposa and Dr. Corral, for extending the food service hours for students on both campuses. We really appreciate that. Thank you, guys, so much. We really appreciate that. Also, I was privileged, along with fifteen other students, to go on a one-week tour where we visit six HBCUs. That was like a week and a half ago. Yeah, so I wanted to thank the Umoja Program on campus for the opportunities so students could, you know, see what these different universities are like, so we could extend our options. I also want to report on the Writing and Reading Success Center. So something, a fun fact about me and Long Beach City College. My favorite part about Long Beach City College is the tutoring, like the services that they offer. Because when I get tutoring, I do well in my classes when I go on these tutors, help me. So currently, the Writing and Reading Success Center, they're having pop-up writing tutoring in Building P. So if a student goes in the center, they could scan the QR code, and it will give them a list of all the tutors that are going to be there and what they're going to be tutoring in regards. So I really love that for students. Also, for justice callers, they're having a blanket drive. Anyone that has a new or slightly-used but washed blanket, they could drop them off, no until November 21st. Also, want to report on cowork, care, and basic needs. They're also having a toy drive currently. Any new unwrapped toys, accepting no until December 13th. We have drop-off locations. They had multiple. I just chose two. Today, we have at LAC the Basic Needs and at TTC Campus in the Student Union. Also, want to report on DSPS. They're in the process of starting up a club for their students so they could build a better sense of community for their students. And they have a couple of workshops. I chose some to share today, which is time management, goal settings, and tips to ace finals for their students. We also have a Fall Festival at a TTC Campus tomorrow in the EE Quad. This will give clubs an opportunity to fundraise so they could get money for their club and get engaged in more activities. Something exciting for November 19, which is Tuesday, which is on a Tuesday, the LAC Campus here in the A Quad would be the International Cultural Fest. So this is in collaboration with the International Student Club and the program. We'll be having, this will be a wonderful, you know, opportunity to celebrate the rich and diverse cultures within the LBCC community, because we have students from all over the country, basically, right here now. We'll be having delicious international food, live performances showcasing diverse talent, and we'll be having cultural boot, offering unique insights and different traditions. Something exciting for students, we've been getting a lot of feedback on this for our ASB After Dark. We've reached out, and we have been supporting our evening students. So we will be having, it's like a grab-and-go. We'll have pizza and snack. We'll have Basic Needs there as well. They'll have resources available for students or, you know, just to answer any questions for evening students passing by. Now, we'll have this available at both campuses. So the LAC Campus, it will be on Tuesday, November 19, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. This will be in the T Building or across in the T Quad. And then we'll be having it at the TTC Campus on the 20th from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. We'll have these tables located in two different areas between DD and GG and JJ and II for students to come out. Also, this event is going to be a little bit big and different, because we're going to have clubs that are going to be there to get our evening students involved on campus. So if there's any evening students, you know, if you could tell them to come out to our ASB After Dark so they could get connected to students on campus. And last but not least, I just want to say thanks to Herlinda Chico for all that she has done for students here at LBCC. I just met her in the summer at an event on campus, and myself and another student would walk up and say, hey, we just wanted to introduce herself, and she was very welcoming to us, so want to say thank you. The other student couldn't be here today, but she sends her regards and say, she'll be missed. You'll be missed. You'll be missed by us, and definitely, hopefully, we could still stay in contact with you. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, ASB President. And now, item 4.2, Student Trustee Report. G. Gonzalez.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, trustees. First thing on the list is myself, rep of evening students Calvin Lewis, our wonderful president, Shamanie Karas, VP Legislative Affairs, Prince Bass, and our Viking Activities Council Chair, Angie Henderson, have been working really hard on our SSC-Resolution writing. The SSC is a conference, I believe, a conference in February, where LBCC is writing a resolution that we're going to bring up to the Student Senate. And if it's passed, it will be sent over to the state. So we've been working hard. The three resolutions will be surrounding evening students, baby changing stations, and native student enrollment. Moving on to the next one is with baby changing stations. I've been working hard with Angie, our Viking Activities Council, Justin Mendez, the Director of Basic Needs and CASA grant, in installing baby changing stations. We reached out to CSULB Campus, the Campus Deputy Building Official Beach Building Services, and we're trying to set up a meeting. And the meeting entails is we're going to try to understand more the process, the costs that go involved, and baby changing stations. There are about, I believe, more, there are a lot of student parents here, and there are a lot of parents that have to bring their kids to school. And it is important that we do provide them with the necessary equipment to make learning easier, as easy as possible. Next one is Native American Heritage Month and Student Enrollment. I'm very happy that the resolution was passed for Native American resolution. And the kickoff was amazing. I saw at TTC Campus, saw the dances, and there were also some great events that was occurring earlier this week. On Thursday, there was a Sovereignty Through Leadership Conference led by NAIC that was held at the SJIC. We had speakers from a number of organizations, and their input was extremely important regarding Indigenous people and how, very much with the flag, it says sovereignty through leadership. But this also leads me to my next point, and it is native enrollment. The data regarding native enrollment is the... The data regarding Native Enrollment is, the data regarding enrollment is off. According to Dr. Becetta, historically, Native American identity has been shaped by colonization, forced relocation, and assimilation policies that led to intermarriage with Native American, Latinx, and Asian communities. Consequently, Native Americans are more likely to identify as multiracial than other groups, reflecting the complex lineage resulting from shared history and resilience. It is important because here at LBCC, I believe, in a report from around 2022, the population of Native students was between 70 and 100 students. But as we look deeper, there were about more than 1,000. So the data is off. And this is not just an issue focused on LBCC. This is a statewide and nationwide problem. And so having accurate data is crucial due to the fact we can provide, we need to provide Native students with the resources and not only provide them with resources, but also create a more kind of welcoming environment, a more inclusive. LBCC is doing a good job. We have the We Belong, the Belong Initiative here, and I love it. But we also have to add more to it. And I know there's still a lot of work we still need to do, but it's important that we acknowledge the data that involves Native students. I had a meeting last week with trustee Nuntuk, and I wanted to thank him for the time for meeting with me. I look forward to working with you, and I look forward to working with the other members. Trustee Chico, I know you're leaving, but I still look forward to meeting you, working with you all. Got great news from Dr. Corral, myself, and President Shamanie. We've been, we've had a lot of talk with extending hours for food options for students. And you emailed us earlier, and I'm really happy to say that there are new extended hours on the Connections Cafe from Monday through Thursday, both campuses, from 7:30 to 7:00 PM, which is, I believe, valuable because a lot of evening students sometimes, you know, they get off work and a lot of, you know, they get off work at 5:00 and, you know, they don't have, they don't have the time to get food. And, you know, providing that is crucial. And last part is, I'm finally, finally, I'm very happy to hear that LBC has divested from BlackRock. And, you know, I understand there's a lot of legal repercussions in it, and I know there's a lot of ins and outs of it. But there's a lot of work that needs to be done. We know the elections were last week, and I know the new administration is looking not as favorable. However, it is important, however, everything starts at the local level, and a divestment from BlackRock is a step forward. But work still needs to be done. And it's also important to, especially during Indigenous Heritage Month, that we acknowledge the Native Palestinians who are being forced off their land from the Israeli settlers. And that is the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Student Trustee. Item 4.3, Academic Senate President Report, Dr. Jerome Hunt.
Good evening, Board President Malalulu, Superintendent President Munoz, distinguished board members and colleagues. I would like to begin my report with a big thank you to trustee Chico for your service to the college and to let you know what a pleasure it has been to work with you over the past four years. Your commitment to our LGBTQIA+ students, staff, faculty is truly appreciated, especially now in this current climate. So thank you for your leadership in making LBCC a place where the LGBTQIA+ community is not only seen and heard, but can be their true authentic selves. So thank you. I do have some great updates to share with the board this evening. First, I want to mention that last month, the Senate passed Resolution 60.1, which is appropriate use of generative artificial intelligence tools. This resolution reaffirms the faculty's commitment to working with the district to develop policies and procedures that will empower faculty and students to use generative AI in the classroom and beyond appropriately. In the spring, the Senate, through our AI Work Group, will develop a framework that will allow us to refine language related to faculty and student use of generative AI with the goal of proposing changes to the appropriate administrative policies to reflect the appropriate use of AI for our students that will not be punitive, but rather supportive in their educational and professional goals. Additionally, tonight, the board will consider approving the new Cal Getzi General Education Pattern. This pattern creates a single pathway for transfer, replacing Plan B and Plan C to better facilitate students' transfer, general education experience. So I want to give a big thank you to the members of our Curriculum Committee, its subcommittees, the Academic Senate, the ASB Cabinet, and campus stakeholders for their thoughtful and meaningful participation in guiding the plan towards approval. In terms of online education, the Online Education Committee and Online Learning and Educational Technology Team are proactively working to align with the new standards from ACCJC. At the most recent Online Education Committee meeting, Institutional Effectness provided a detailed update on the very specific requirements related to regular and substantive interaction in online courses. And we want to thank Jennifer Holmgren for this great presentation. The Online Education Committee will continue to prioritize discussions and actions related to these new requirements and aims to lead the institutional response so that we can exceptionally be, sorry, so we can be exceptionally well-prepared for our next accreditation visit in 2028. And finally, in terms of student equity, applications for our Equity Mini Grant will be rolling out at the end of this month. The Student Equity Subcommittee is proud to announce that they will be holding information sessions that will be done to support faculty on grant writing that will address sections accurately for focusing on populations that we're looking for for the Equity Mini Grants, which are our Black students and our first-generation students, and will also help them with understanding the scoring process and other pertinent information. So that concludes my report for this evening. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Hunt. Item 4.4, Classified Senate President Report, Benjamin Chase.
Mabu hi, familia. Thank you again, Herlinda, for being one of the first trustees to come out and support us specifically. Go ahead, next slide for it. We had our second water polo game watch this year for it. So thank you again for being the first one with us. Appreciate that. We did a take-a-break with the Classified Senate. We had over 23 of our colleagues that came out during their break time to take in the match. Next slide. And we've continued our streak of undefeated status when we've gone to support our teams in any sport for it. So I just wanted to show, you know, no offense, Mike, but, you know, sorry for your, you know, former employer. Had to share that. Next slide for it. And again, we just wanted to share some of our love from some of the events that we had earlier this term and last month, technically. Some photos there. Next slide. And going to one of the big events that we had, our 75th anniversary, and you can see for TTC there, Jonathan and myself with the letters. I said, I see them, so I might remember how to say them properly, because every time I say them, I always want to say other letters. And so this is just a reminder for it. Next slide. This was a great opportunity for us all to come together. Thank you, Dario, for making it happen tonight, that we actually have the committee planning group photo, because it didn't want to load before, kept coming up blank, but we do have it there. And I just wanted to share out and say thank you to everyone that helped make that event possible. It was a stunning success for all of us involved. I also want to thank Dr. Kirkwood especially for this and making us come through this process. Thank you for it. They have the Notorious 19. I have the Fantastic Four in the slide there. I said, we seem to be able to get any of the things we want and make it happen for the group, so we're very happy to have that. Two of the hopefully future Vikings that you see there, those are Jonathan Tejada and Christina's daughters for it, with Dr. Kirkwood, both in high school right now. One is a senior and one is a freshman for it. So they definitely have embraced the spirit. So we're hopeful to have them come with us. Next slide for it. In this Dr. Baxter, we got to showcase some of our love for helping the Homeless Students Foundation in our tribute to Dorothy Pittman Hughes. The picture of the ball that you see up there was signed by Vince Ferragamo. That went for over $700 to help our students for it. So it was a great turnout, a great event to have. So I was happy to showcase that and be there to support. Next slide for it. And then Homecoming for it. I don't know if you've all got to see our wandering magician at the TTC 75th, but if you were at Homecoming, you got to see, I don't think my colleagues have still been able to understand how he did what he did, but it was awesome. Thank you again for making that happen. I see Deborah is in the house. So thank you, Deborah, for coordinating and supporting that. Next slide for, and this is a shout-out to my Enrollment Services teammates, Graciela, Victoria, Bianca, Susanna and her son for it, and Kimberly. And you can see where we had our ring toss game, helping out, doing, I mean, and just us having some game day spirit as well. So thank you again for everyone helping with the Monster Bash tailgate. Next slide. And most importantly, you see the Tejada family again. But again, we deliver on victory again for it. Next slide for it. And so we did host a lunch with the Classified Senate. Part of this was supposed to be like a Skybox event, and we were going to game watch with the women's soccer team. Unfortunately, it was their sophomore night, and they moved the game from the afternoon to the night, which we weren't told, but it was, we were there. So we had an awesome time anyway, coming together. And about 25 that came through for that event. So thank you all for being there. And so the whole point for us, during the summer, we came up with a concept of taking charge, building connection, helpfulness, awareness, recognition, growth, and engagement for classified employees and professionals at the college for it. And so we're trying to make sure that we continue to do that. And so I want to thank my colleagues for being there to support that aspect for it. Halloween, someone I know, the dais was there, Viv, got to have some fun and enjoy and was front row and center, took some pictures with our group as well. But this is just a picture of my colleagues. That's the Classified Senate in the center there. So we were very happy to partner with the exec team and Dr. Munoz to make sure that Halloween actually had an event again at the college for it. Next one. And so here you can see my colleague Ashley leading the dancing. We had treats, community, and fun. Let's see if they're still here or not. So the group that won student equity, one for La Toria, is for the group costume for us. So it was a great opportunity to have them out there. I think their group had even more people than this in it. This is just what was the final picture that they took, because I was like looking, I'm like, I think they're missing about 10 that were on stage with me originally for it. Next slide for it. The classified hosts for it were myself and Ashley. Another shout-out to my Enrollment Services team. They did holiday theme. So everybody got to come as the holiday that they wanted to pick for it. So we had Christmas, we had Arbor Day, we had Valentine's, we had Presidents' Day with Abraham Lincoln there, Dia de los Muertos for it. My colleague, you can see she's pregnant right now. And so that's the picture of the baby on there as well for it. We had Thanksgiving for it. So it was a great turnout for our team from both campuses. So I was appreciative again of allowing us to have that opportunity. Next slide. And so we can have fun for the whole point. You just want to make sure everybody know that we can have fun for it. I said, and to show that, and Ashley smiling and having the greatest time, I think, of all of us the day for it. But thank you again for that. Next slide. And on a somber but thankful note, we got to celebrate Dia de los Muertos for it and connect to those that we've lost. Unfortunately, we lost a couple more folks that weekend after this for the folks who are there. But I want to thank Andrea and Michelle for setting up and supporting and having an ofrenda for it and being there from a classified family. And our love goes out to them. And thank you all. And especially had connection again with Dr. Corral and Dr. De Vitorre as well. So thank you all.
Thank you, Benjamin. Item 4.5 on the agenda, LBCC FA Bargaining President Report, Suzanne Engelhardt.
Good evening. I want to thank VP Douglas and FPD Coordinator Heather Dai for a beautiful job presenting and welcoming our Notorious 19. As you know, in item 9.1, the LBCC FA has sunshine for our, this coming year. On behalf of our team, we want to express our gratitude to departing trustee Chico for her collaboration during previous negotiations, processes, and wish her the best in her future endeavors. We want to also congratulate trustee Udoak for his work on Measure AC. And we look forward to working constructively and transparently with the district to ensure, if I find my spot here. Sorry about that. To ensure our course offerings and services best match the needs and demands of our students. As you can see by the turnout tonight, our membership, approximately 80-plus faculty and our Notorious 19 memberships, attended the board meeting. Our faculty are engaged in the process and eager to support a negotiation cycle that continues to move the college forward so that we can better meet the needs of students and faculty. I want to introduce our team. Veronica Alvarez from World Language, Ryan Carroll from Physical Science, Sean Dinsis, History, Poly Sci, and Ethnic Studies, James Holbert from Auto Tech, and Cynthia Roscoe, who cannot be here this evening. We also have two other members as resources, Jeff Sable from Library and Veronica and Joku Carter from Counseling. And I would like to, would you guys like to share anything tonight? Okay, all right. So again, you will not be here for that cycle, but we trust that Dr. Annette Morton will be engaged, be curious, and work collaboratively with all of you so that we can have a smooth transition with our next negotiation cycle. Have a good evening.
Hey, Suzanne. Just want to clarify, last name is Nuntuk, N-T-U-K, not, not, you said my first name, so just clarify. No problem.
Okay, thank you. Item 4.6, AFT Bargaining President Report, Robert Rometta.
Good evening, Board, President Munoz, Superintendent Munoz, my apologies, Board President Malalulu, and esteemed board members. And Herlinda, you saddened me by your leaving. Out of all the trustees over the years, you are so much more connected to the community than any of the rest seem to be, though I know you all work in your community, no offense. Hey, she, she brings that, what can I say, that Latin family orientation, brings it from the community and just seems to bubble over. And not that I'm insulting any of the rest of you. I don't want to say you're not that way, but it could just be her bubbly attitude and the way she tries to incorporate everything with family and the community. And the community is her family. And, you know, over the years, I've seen changes. In the four years, it's been very an interesting ride. You have shown up like all the other trustees to all the events, but you just seem a little larger than life sometimes. I don't see Udoak up there with the, with the multicolored dresses. I just didn't see it. You know, maybe next time, it'll get there. But, you know, it's, it's our community. And you've made, you made more of our community. You've added to it. You've, you've made it a, you made it more family-oriented. And, you know, the classified may not be the most powerful on the block, but, you know, we try really hard to support our students. We do everything we can to make this college as great as it could be. And, you know, in the coming years with, because of that bond passing and, and Utaq was, you know, just on top of that, and he's just on a roll. And I, and the classified have supported that from the beginning. And I believe after the next 10 or 15 years, the community is going to be shocked at what you accomplish in the coming years, because this is going to take the college to the next level. So as we wrap it up, I know it's going to be a fast slide because Thanksgiving's barely around the corner. And after that, we're in, almost into finals. So we're going to be like gone, and then the semester and the year will be over, and we'll be in a whole new year. So I just want to wish all of you happy holidays. I wish the best for all of you, and I'll miss you immensely. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Item 4.7, CHI Bargaining President Report, Crystal Huckabee. All right, we're going to move on to section five on the agenda, Superintendent President Report, item 5.1, Dr. Munoz.
All right. Thank you, Board President Malalulu. Good evening, everyone. I am excited to share some highlights from this past month. It's been a vibrant time here at LBCC, filled with events and celebrations that showcase the incredible diversity, talent, and community spirit we are so proud of. So to kick it off, cue the music. Let's see if Carl, Carl, cue the music. Thank you, Carl. I am thrilled to start off with some exciting news from this weekend. Congratulations to our outstanding women's soccer team. Yes, let's give them a round of applause. Look at those faces. Congratulations to our outstanding women's soccer team for becoming this year's becoming this year's South Coast, I'm going to say this correctly, South Coast, South Conference Champions. Let us also wish them the best of luck tonight as they face Pasadena City College in round two of the conference. November is Native American Heritage Month, and so, I want to acknowledge and extend my appreciation to the Board of Trustees for passing that resolution, along with both Dr. Eric Becerra, as well as Justin Mendez and our student leaders coming out tonight. We kicked off this amazing event at TTC, and I'd like to share a highlight video capturing the heart and energy of the celebration. I want to truly encourage all in our campus community to take part in the events we have planned for this month to honor the Native American Heritage Month. You know, I think it's important to recognizing and knowledge that Long Beach is situated in Tongva Nation. And this particular part of the region for the Tongva Nation is significant for the community. And so, to really come out and celebrate and reflect and honor. So, again, it's an opportunity for us to engage in the rich history and culture of indigenous people. So, please take advantage of all those events that are scheduled this month. In October, we celebrated Filipina, Filipino, and Filipinex American History Month. Let's take a look at a video of the awesome kickoff event.
Hello, LBCC family. It's my great honor to welcome you to the kickoff of Filipina American History Month. Your efforts make a tremendous difference, ensuring that we can all reflect and honor the legacy of Filipino-Americans together.
Good afternoon, support, say young lahag. Good afternoon to all of you. I'm Dr. Steph Lira. This campus has a history, and we are a part of that history. I have learned that so many Filipino and Filipino-Americans take pride in their contributions to the work of Long Beach City College.
As we move to this month of celebration and learning, I hope that each of us will take the time to reflect on the important contributions that Filipino-Americans have made to our country and to our campus.
I'd like to thank our students, faculty, and staff who work so hard to bring these events to fruition, and again, for celebrating the rich history and contributions of Filipino-Americans here at LBCC. Last month, LBCC had a unique opportunity to participate in the National Space Council's Fact Finding Meeting at the Port of Long Beach. I got to talk to the Space Council, y'all. It was amazing. Vice President Kendra Madrid and I proudly shared insights into our programs aimed at preparing students for careers in the space industry. It was an honor to showcase LBCC and show how our educational programs and initiatives are aligning with the demands of the evolving aerospace workforce. As we know, Long Beach is also lovingly recognized as Space Beach. And so, this was a really great opportunity to, to really strengthen our relationship with the NSF and NASA. So, thank you. We also marked a huge milestone for TTC with its amazing 75th anniversary celebration. And it was an amazing day. Over 1,000 people joined us for an educational block party filled with music, games, food from local vendors, and resource booths with information about all great things LBCC has to offer. The highlight for me was seeing so many people from our campus and wider community come together and celebrate. I will say, at least in the seven, almost seven years I've been here at LBCC, I've never seen that kind of community engagement and presence. I've seen them at the flea market, but that's not necessarily an LBCC event, or at the Tamale Festival. But this was our event, and it was amazing to see so many people come out. A big thank you to Dr. Kirkwood and our team for organizing one of the best days TTC has seen. It was truly unforgettable. Last month, leaders from community colleges across the nation gathered for the ACCT Leadership Congress in Seattle. I'm thrilled to announce that our very own Board President Vivian Maluulu was reelected as Director at Large. That's right. We appreciate your leadership on the national stage and how you represent Long Beach City College. So, congratulations and thank you for your dedication to LBCC, Board President Maluulu. The Monster Bash, oh, I'll wait till it changes. The Monster Bash Homecoming was an absolute blast. Not only did our Viking football team secure a victory against the Orange Coast College Pirates in a total blowout, but we also had an incredible turnout for the tailgate party. Thank you to our Student Life and Athletics Team under the leadership of Dean Deb Miller Calvert for putting on such a memorable homecoming celebration. Go Vikings. Halloween at LBCC was unforgettable. The executive team, we visited the Child Development Centers, and I'm just going to pause for a second, go off script. I was living my best life in my Star Wars costume. I even dug out my childhood Ewok and a couple of my action figures, and we're walking around campus with them. Sorry. And I'm not even going to touch that one. I'm just going to keep rolling back to my script. But we, the executive team had the opportunity to visit the Child Development Center to celebrate with our littlest students, and it was an amazing, it was an amazing time. So, again, a big shout out to our CDC Centers and the leadership on both, at both campuses, because the kids were, it was awesome. It was pajama day for the kids. And so, it was a great experience. I hope everyone enjoyed the festivities. You know, I've had people, it's interesting, because I've had a couple people ask me like, well, what was the point of all that? And I said, well, what do you think it was about? And, and, you know, I think it's, it's this. It's seeing the smiles on people's faces, an opportunity to bring people together to create community. Yes, we have an educational focus and an educational mission, and I think that's very important. But it's also, I think, important that we think about ways that we can come together and feel connected to one another and just have fun and celebrate each other. And I think it was a wonderful event, and it, and it served its purpose. And so, I'm grateful to the Classified Senate leadership for coming up with the idea. I think it was about two years ago that the Senate approached myself during one of our meetings and said, you know, can we do something that's community focused, where people could get release time and be able to participate? And so, we moved in that direction. And I will say, the smiles on students' faces, I had so many students come up to me, and they were so proud. Someone literally made a Star Wars costume out of, using a 3D printer. And the student designed it, and he was so intricate, and he was telling me all about it. And it just, it was a great day. So, again, thank you to our LBCC staff and students who participated. We were honored to celebrate Dia de los Muertos here at Long Beach City College with beautiful ofrendas displayed in front of the A Building, followed by a heartfelt procession from the P Building to the A Building. It was a touching way for us to come together as a community and remember the loved ones who have passed. I want to also thank our incredible Foundation and Scholarship Department. We celebrated over 650 students at our annual scholarship reception last week. This year, more than $1 million was awarded through over 900 scholarships. This truly demonstrates the support and belief our community has in our students and their futures. So, a big shout out to Shira Compton and her team in the Scholarship Office, as well as our Foundation. Thank you to everyone who makes these scholarships possible. I know that we have an employee-giving program, so many of you, like myself, contribute every month for scholarships for our students. So, your generosity and commitment to our students is truly appreciated. Continuing on the scholarship message, one of our strongest supporters of LBCC scholarships is the Long Beach Rotary, which I have the privilege of serving as a member of. I had the privilege to attend the Long Beach Rotary Scholarship Luncheon, along with Superintendent of Long Beach Schools, Dr. Jill Baker, where we were able to recognize hundreds of LBCC and CSU LB students who received scholarships this year totaling more than $430,000. That's just amazing. I want to extend a heartfelt thank you to the Long Beach Rotary Club for their generous and ongoing support of our students and educational journeys. Also want to acknowledge Dr. Baxter. Dr. Baxter actually has a scholarship that's named after her, that she provides support to students. So, thank you, Dr. Baxter, as well. Oh, you do? Yeah, okay. Cue the music, Carl. Amazing news, everybody. I'm going to sit with this moment for a second. I think we should be really happy. Okay, Carl, you can cut the music. I want to extend a heartfelt gratitude to our community and supporters for the successful passage of Measure AC. This historic investment will tremendously benefit our students and future generations by allowing us to continue to modernize our facilities, enhance technology, and expand resources that directly support student success. You know, I have the privilege and honor to be able to go out into the community and talk to many different individuals. And a lot of folks will sometimes say, you know, okay, you're, you're going after another bond, but, you know, the campus looks so good. And I say, yeah, a good part of the campus does look beautiful, but as our faculty and our staff who are in the rooms, not all classrooms function and operate in the same way. And so, yes, we have some wonderful buildings that we've been able to modernize and build new facilities with the generous support of Measure M and Measure LB. But we know that the entire campus hasn't been, been renovated and impacted yet. And so, this is going to really take us to the next level. And so, I want to start by thanking a few people. I want to start by thanking the Board of Trustees for unanimously supporting Measure AC. And as you know, you had deliberated over some tough data and had to make a very tough decision at the board retreat back in August. But through your collective wisdom, you decided to move forward. And there was a clear path to victory, but we knew it was going to be a challenging path. I want to also say a special thank you and a heartfelt thank you to trustee Uduwak Joe Intuk. Yes, you deserve a round of applause for that. You know, the college could only engage so much in a pre-campaign phase. And once you move into campaign phase, myself and others have to kind of create a bright line in what that work looks like. And you really led the way and really, I mean, just honestly, and I know Mike, and I talked about this. And Mike, do you mind sharing what you said to me privately? Because I think, I want to, I think it should be said.
Sure, I'd be happy to. I've worked with a lot of board members throughout my 35 years in the community colleges, but I've never seen a board member come to the plate on a bond issue like trustee Intuk. And I mean that from here, because I've seen a lot of them. And talk about somebody, I listened on Friday at noon to all of the stuff that was going on, and he was always at the lead. And the inspiration that he was giving all the people who were there, and there's probably eight or 10 at times, he just did an absolute fantastic job. And thank you.
So, thank you, trustee Intuk. I also want to thank our LBCC Foundation. They were very instrumental and supportive as well, so I want to thank them. And, you know, everyone that supported Measure AC, for the student volunteers who phone-banked, who showed up to be trained, and to the campaign office, to the employees who dedicated their time as well, just thank you. Because, you know, this, this is really going to be able to create a legacy and an impact for our students. You know, our 100-year anniversary is just a couple years away. And I think that these resources is what's going to allow us to essentially create the college environment that we need for the next 100 years. So, again, thank you. And finally, I had the real distinct honor and privilege today to have lunch at the Bistro with some of our veteran students. And, you know, there's a couple things I want to share from this experience. So, many of you know I try to do every month. I rotate different groups of employees and students. I host at the Bistro to just understand their experience at LBCC and what it's like for them, and what we can do better, and what we're doing well. And as I was meeting with our veteran students, they really shared their lived experience and what it's like to kind of return to civilian life and take that leap of faith and move into pursuing their education. And, I mean, we talked about all sorts of things of like what it's like to be enlisted and kind of experience sleep deprivation, and then have to kind of come back and the long effects of sleep deprivation, like things that I didn't even think about in my mind about what that experience would be like for them. It was, it was a wonderful experience. And as I was having conversations with these amazing students, I asked them a question, you know, how has Long Beach City College impacted you? And what would you want me to know? And I'm going to pull up my phone because I took notes. They all talked about people. It wasn't a class, it wasn't a curriculum, it was people. And so, some of the names they mentioned to me that really, I think, touched my heart. They brought up Professor Hartford in math and what an impact, how some of them really were struggling to get through statistics. And Professor Hartford really took the time to sit down with them and didn't give up and didn't let them give up. And as you know, transfer-level math is a huge barrier for many of our students. And if they're going to ever be able to transfer and fully actualize their educational goals, they have to get through that stats class. It's such an important gateway class. And so, they talked to me about that experience. They brought up Karen Thurston and the impact that they had, that she had on Professor Thurston, had on, on him, one of the students, especially who's interested in computer science and really taught him the love of computer science. They brought up Professor Quintero in Spanish and how, how caring she is and how special they make, they, how special she made them feel. And another student brought up Sherry Galvanize, and actually talked about how she was really struggling, or they were really struggling with just chronic pain and just different things. And she introduced in her class meditation and things that helped her cope differently. So, I just want to say, you know, that these are our students, and they mean a lot to us. And it, and I just want to acknowledge all of our veterans here at LBCC who have chosen LBCC for their educational journeys. And we appreciate them, and we honor them and their families who have made sacrifices that we all appreciate. So, with that said, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Munoz. Section 6 on the agenda, there are no presentations. Section 7 on the agenda, we've already done 7.1, which is the recognition. Item 7.2, Revised 2024 Board Meeting Schedule. I need a motion in a second that the Board of Trustees approve the Revised 2024 Board Meeting Schedule as submitted.
Move approval.
We've got a motion by trustee Intuk, second by trustee Baxter. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 7.3, I need to appoint an additional board member to the November 18, 2024 Audit Subcommittee Meeting. Trustee Chico and I do serve on that subcommittee. We have a scheduled meeting, but she's unable to attend due to a schedule conflict. So, do any of my colleagues on the board want to attend that meeting with me next Monday, the 18th?
I can do it.
What time is it?
It is, thank you, trustee Intuk. It is from 2:00 to 3:00 PM, and it will be here on campus in person.
Okay, I can do it.
Rock, paper, scissors?
Rock, paper, scissors, or flip a coin.
I'm not retired, so, okay.
Whoever wants to do it.
Trustee Baxter.
Trustee Baxter, would you like to join me at that meeting? Boy, you know, look at this incredible fight to serve, right, where you've got two trustees just going at it, trying to attend a meeting. Usually, we try to get rid of meetings. Thank you, trustee Baxter. You and I will be at that meeting here on campus, 2:00 to 3:00 PM. Yes, it'll be, it'll be here in this building Monday. All right. Item 7.4, an Executive Summary Legislation and Policy Update. This is an information item only. The Executive Summary can be viewed on Board Docs for the benefit of the public. Item 7.5, Board of Trustees Reports. Would any of my colleagues like to go ahead and do your report? Trustee Intuk, go ahead.
Sure. Hey, thanks, everybody. I want to talk a little bit about Measure AC. Thank you, everyone who supported. The LA County Register of Reporters did an update this afternoon at 4:30. We are at 68% support. It's the highest level of support of any of the bond measures, K-12 or Community College in LA County. It was a great team effort. We raised more than $750,000 to communicate with diverse voters across Long Beach. In case you don't know, Long Beach has changed. It is no longer Iowa by the Sea. Those days are over. It is a diverse, multiracial coalition of voters in every part of the city. And we communicated in multiple technologies, multiple languages, multiple mailers, and use, you know, just best practices, and brought together an awesome external team of consultants, digital specialists, communications folks, walkers. And so, just, it was a great team effort and a different approach than how I think historically it was done. Want to say, thank trustee Baxter for her support the last year and a half. Contrary to what the Viking newspaper says, we get along and we...
Did they really?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. You didn't see my, my headline? I'm the other Joe this, this week in the, in the newspaper. But we work together in polling and vetting and analysis But we work together in polling and vetting and analysis and wording to make sure that this is, you know, not just a legacy for trustee Baxter, but for all of us. I mean, this is going to allow us to build student and worker housing. This is going to allow us to do a joint middle college, as Long Beach Unified, where students can get their associate's degree at 18 years old. This is going to allow us to build new classrooms, new labs, you know, new classrooms, labs, increase indoor air quality, better learning outcomes, safety. We're going to have ability to invest in our IT infrastructure to avoid those security hacks that we've had to take you down the campus. There's so many great things. And we're eligible for extra money. The way we worded it, we are eligible for state, county, and federal dollars. And so, we can make that investment from the community go three to four times further, right? And that's three to four times more impact in learning outcomes and facilities. It's just otherwise, we wouldn't, we don't have the funds to do with our previous bonds that are now exhausted. I did have some folks ask me, is it really affordable? Did we really keep Long Beach City College affordable? Yes, we did. You think about it, if we have buildings that continue to be more than 75, 80 years old, we are eventually not going to be able to use those buildings. I know Building F was an issue of concern that is fairly old, that if we just let it deteriorate, at one point, that's going to be classroom space we can't use, right? And so, we, we need to, to repair that. Additionally, our nursing backlog, we, we have more demand than we have classroom space for nursing because we don't have enough nursing labs. So, now we can build more nursing labs. And this is an affordable, high-paying career that can't be outsourced, that can't be done by robots, that we're in high demand, and we don't physically have enough space. So, that's an affordable pathway for students. Additionally, the funds that we've used from the last several bonds, we have reduced our utility bills, water and electricity, by more than $2 million. That's $2 million directly annually to the general fund, that we don't have to increase fees, parking, you know, that, that's avoided costs that's going directly back into the college, you know? So, there was, I was surprised, some folks were like, is it really affordable? Like, yeah, it's affordable. It's making it more affordable, it's keeping it affordable. And that, you know, and costs were a big issue in this election. And so, we were on the right side of that conversation. So, I just wanted to thank everyone who participated. Also, you know, I want to thank trustee Chico. You know, I was, I was thinking about all the conversations. Without trustee Chico, there would be no Dr. Munoz. You know, without Dr. Munoz, we would not have the diverse diocese that we have. We did not have an Asian-American vice president ever until now. We did not have a black vice president at Long Beach City College until now. We did not have a woman of color as a vice president until now. And so, it's just, you know, we talk about change, or people accuse us of lip service, and that's not the case. And that wouldn't be possible without trustee Chico willing to make the change in the middle of a pandemic to do what we believe was the right thing to do for the community. So, again, I want to thank you for what you've done, and your legacy will, will continue. So, look forward to continue to work with you.
Trustee Baxter? Dr. Baxter, would you like to go next?
I didn't know we didn't get along. I gotta, I gotta find that article. Well, give me a copy because I haven't seen the Viking. Okay, before, before I start, don't turn that timer on. I, I just want to recognize trustee Zia because I jumped, you know, unfortunately too quickly. Trustee Zia and I have two scholarships through the Long Beach City College Foundation, one for homeless students and one for students in ESL. So, that, we do have a scholarship. The scholarship that President Munoz was talking about, this, I, I'm the queen of scholarships, was at Long Beach Rotary. So, that's why I jumped. Sorry, I didn't mean to insult you. Okay, on October 10th, I, oh, this was really interesting. I attended the USC, oh, thank you for turning the clock back. USC Anti-Semitism Conference. This was all day, all day at USC, they, and I did not go to USC, but I'm on their mailing list. They invited us to hear all the different stories, what's going on about anti-Semitism, which of course is very important with what's going on in the world today. Then that was during the day. Then that night, I went to the President's Circle at the Holiday Inn. And what was great about this President's Circle meeting was the bond was talked about and explained in detail, and that's really important. And I, I just want to point something out. I have to tell you, I was not as smart as he was. I wasn't sure it was going to pass because everybody who talked to me said, I'm not qualified. The first bond that I was very involved with passed by 70%. This passed by 68. So, you know, I mean, that's really incredible because you normally go down, but, but we didn't, we did great. And the outreach was just fantastic, okay? Then I went on to Centro Cha, where our dear president, Vivian Malauulu, was honored with the Imogen Award, very, very well-deserving. Then on the 15th, I had a Lakewood Village Neighborhood Association Board meeting. On the 16th, Ronald McDonald House had their evening down at the Pacific Theater, and it was fabulous. They made $1 million in one night. I wish I could do that. On October 17th, the Phil Am Kickoff. On the 18th, the Lakewood Education Foundation Golf Tournament. This provides grants to teachers in Lakewood, which, the part that belongs to Long Beach Unified School District. Then on the 19th, the PCC 75th Anniversary, fabulous. You know, I really want to salute the faculty and staff. We're out on a Saturday in very, very big numbers. I told Dr. Munoz at the time, I've never seen so many people involved on a campus activity on a Saturday, it was fabulous. Then on the 21st, AAU W Board meeting. On the 22nd, oh, this is great, we had disabled students meeting of people from Cal State Long Beach and us, and nonprofits in the area that deal with disabled students. And the idea was, how can we all work together to make sure that there's no duplication, that we're doing all kinds of wonderful things, and talk to each other? And it was great because the people at LBCC gave great presentations. And Cal State Long Beach wants to steal some of our ideas, and we're going to steal some of theirs, so it'll be equal. Anyway, it was a wonderful afternoon. Then a foundation board meeting on the 24th. And then at night is a Helping Homeless Students event in the T Building Lobby. And again, our, our faculty and staff came out in large, large numbers. We made $10,000. Think about it, $10,000 in two hours, that's pretty good. Not as good as a million, but $10,000 in two, two hours, very good, because of people on campus being very, very generous. Then I went to Beverly Norberg's Funeral on the 25th. On the 26th, Team Spirit Walk. Team Spirit is part, part of the Todd Cancer Institute. That afternoon, the Long Beach City College Homecoming. And then that evening, I went to the Alpha Kappa Alpha Dinner. And this is a women's sorority, very, very big at Cal State Long Beach, and all over, was founded in 1908. And the African-American women, and our Megan, and Megan's last name, I forgot, she was the emcee. And, you know, it's amazing, you see people and they're doing stuff in the community, and that's what's so great about our institution. Uh-oh, I've lost that. Anyway, I got, I'll have to do this next month. Oh, yes, don't we, yeah. I was the token white person with Udoak. No, no, he didn't say that, I said that. No, there were two of us there. And it was, it was really interesting, very, very interesting. But I'm in trouble, I better be quiet. Okay, I'm going to quit, I'll finish next month.
You still have 30 seconds.
Well, I know, I got, I got three, I got three pages.
You're good, you've got time.
You can type it up, 70 seconds.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I'll type it. Well, how do I take away from you? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Baxter. Any other trustee reports?
Okay, so, I will start with after our board meeting last week. On Thursday, the 10th, I would like to once again say thank you to Jessica Quintana, Centro Cha, and the wonderful staff of that great nonprofit organization for selecting me to receive their Higher Education Award, Nuestra Imagen for 2024. Very grateful to be able to share the award with Long Beach City College. And I consider that one of probably the proudest moments of my professional career. And the fact that I had five tables, five tables that I was aware of, and then a sixth table that populated later in the night. Thank you for everyone who attended that event. I was very, very, very happy. On Friday, the 11th, after celebrating with Centro Cha late into the night, Thursday, I woke up early in the morning, Friday, the 11th, and attended the Long Beach Unified School District Partners and Pathways, where Long Beach City College received a Key Contributor Award. I was there with Vice President Madrid, and Dr. Elijah Sims was there. There were several of us there. I don't want to, sorry that I'm forgetting everybody else was there. But it was great listening to two of our LBCC students share their experiences and why LBCC has transformed their academic journey, especially because they talked about the career training that they received on our campus. So, that was endearing to me. And then I left there and went to the Long Beach Yacht Club, where our ASU EDD cohort met. And I'd like to say thank you for the three guests that we had who shared their recent doctoral experiences with us. It was very encouraging to hear that. On the 16th, I was also at the A Few Good Men Gala. I am so grateful that now it's a few good men and women. Welcome to 2024 Ronald McDonald House, and thank you for recognizing women. I understand it's, as Dr. Baxter said, because you're running out of men. So, it's great, we'll take it. We'll, we'll be included in that because you ran out of men to honor, so now you're honoring women, but I'm happy nevertheless. On the 17th, I too was at the Filipino Heritage Month event. I have never missed one of those events. I think I've been to every single one of those. On the 19th, I was at the TTC 75th Anniversary Celebration. Dr. Kirkwood, your team, the committee, what a fantastic job, the energy, the food, the vendors, the music. I was so happy to see VIP Records there. Fantastic event. I'm so grateful that it was at the TTC campus. Thank you for that. The very next day, I was on a flight to Seattle for the ACCT Congress. And thank you for that. I was re-elected to a second term on the Board of Directors. Great organization. Thank you to Dr. Munoz, Carl Kemp, Stacy Toda, and Shayna, I know Shayna's still here. Phillips, yes, there you are. Thank you for all the hard work you did campaigning and making sure that we brought home that dub. Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Intuck went as well. You know what? Welcome to my world because I, I've been overlooked tonight several times, so now you know how I feel. So, thank you for that. On Friday, the 26th, Homecoming, wow, I, I'm so great, I'm so happy that you moved the tailgate to right in front of the entrance to Vet Stadium instead of having it off to the side. Whose ever idea that was, that was a fantastic idea. People have to walk through the tailgate to get inside to the box office, and people were engaged. It was a great game, great weather, thank you, Homecoming was awesome. On Wednesday, the 30th, I was at the CCEJ Humanitarian Award Luncheon, a great event. Long Beach City College was also deep in the house. And then on the 31st, I was here for the Halloween Costume Contest. And Dario, did you happen to get the two photos I sent you? Here is the student who made his own costume with the printer, what do you call it? The 3D printer. So, he made that costume with a 3D printer. So, I was very proud of that because obviously, we teach that and he's using our equipment. So, I was very happy for that. On the 6th, I was at the Union Trades Fair at TTC. And then I spent some time on campus just walking around. And I stumbled upon this next photo, Dario. And these are students who are, and, and I know I'm going to mess this up, I apologize, I don't have all the information that I need, but I'm working on getting all the information. But they are actually connected to the Port of Long Beach, and they are on our campus, on our TTC campus, taking classes that are taught by Port of Long Beach staff. And they're here on our campus, using our facilities and learning logistics and trade. And I didn't know they were here. I, I happened to be on campus for the Trades Fair. I was walking around with our labor partners, and I happened to walk on this campus. I recognized somebody in this photo who I know, and I said, what are you doing here? And she said, I'm taking a class. What class? It's through the Port of Long Beach. And I was blown away because I didn't even know that existed. Now, in closing, and that's it for the photos, Dario, thank you for making that happen. In closing, I also want to congratulate everyone who gave their time to Measure A C. I too want to sing laurels to trustee Intuck. Vice President Gregorik, I agree with you. This is the second bond measure that I've been involved with. I've never seen anybody work as hard. I know that there's a lot of silly drama and unnecessary politics. And for some reason, I, you know, trustee Intuck, you, you should write a book one day on your patience and tolerance and the way you endure, a lot of the things you endure, which I think are incredibly unfair. You have no idea how hard trustee Intuck works for all of you. And he poured his heart and soul into Measure A C, which is going to make the district bigger, better, stronger. It's going to serve our student population, it's going to serve our community, our faculty or staff. It's a win-win situation all the way around, and I've never seen anybody work so hard. He raised almost $1 million for this bond measure. And even though he didn't do it alone, he did it alone. He did it by himself. Even though he had help, it was, he was the one that was out there encouraging, motivating, getting the job done. And when we start seeing the fruits of the labor that trustee Intuck, great success with Measure A C, are bringing to this district, I hope all of you will join me in saying thank you to him for many, many years to come. And I hope that some of the undue and unnecessary and unfair drama and politics and silliness that, you know, falls on your shoulders, I hope that people start to recognize how terribly unfair they are because I think you're an asset to this board and an asset to the district. So, thank you for that. Yes, and I have one more thing to do. I was not going to forget. I'm not the one who forgot. Sorry. So, there is one more thing that I'd like to say. This is officially my last board meeting, even though I do open up next, next month's board meeting, I do open that meeting up, and then we do a transition of the board. But there is someone else's last board meeting today in addition to trustee Chico, and that is Vice President Mike Gregorik. So, this is his last board meeting with us. So, on behalf of the board and on behalf of the district, I would like to personally thank you for the work that you've done. And let me tell you, you were also deeply involved in Measure A C and its success. And you've been very involved stepping in really unexpectedly with personnel changes and being the chief business officer, coming in to help in a lot of different ways. So, we do have this beautiful plant for you, and we'd like to recognize you and say thank you for your service. So, please join me.
Thank you, everybody. And that concludes section seven of the agenda. We're going to go to section eight on the agenda. I asked if any other trustee wanted to give a report, and no one said anything. So, we're going to move on to section eight on the agenda. Item 8.1, any item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately if a member of the Board of Trustees so requests. Do I have any requests? All right, we're going to jump to section nine on the agenda.
Can you just stop for an answer? I do have one that I'd like to pull off the agenda.
Which item?
It's item 8.12.
Item 8.12, contract amendments have been pulled. I need a motion and a second.
To pull the item?
Yes. Do we need to pull, do we need a motion and a second, or can we just make the request?
We usually make the request.
All right, we've got the request. Any other items? All right, I need a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar minus item 8.12.
Move approval.
Second.
I've got a motion by trustee Intuck, second by trustee Chico, to approve the consent agenda minus item 8.12. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion carries, and now we'll hear item 8.12 that trustee Zia has pulled. This is a contract amendment. It's an action item that the Board of Trustees authorize the Vice President Business Services or Designee to enter into and execute the contract amendment as submitted. And this is contract 99786.1 with Hovness Inc., with amendment number six, to increase the contract amount by $650,000 for a total contract amount not to exceed $3,516,462.
Move approval.
We've got a motion to approve by trustee Intuck, second by trustee Chico. Any discussion?
Yes, I believe there are other contracts on this agenda as well that wasn't mentioned. But my question is on the Hovness contract. But my question is on the Hovness contract that has been in place since 2020. And I know I've brought this up previously. This is the Sixth Amendment, and it's over $3.5 million now. It is framed as supporting our homeless students. But when you look at the amendment, it's a little bit inscrutable to understand what exactly that support is. So if staff can provide an explanation of what this new amendment entails, that will be supportive of the request to increase the amount by $650,000.
I believe Vice President Corral is going to respond to that inquiry.
Sure. This specific amendment is designed to help continue to provide supports for our unhoused students or students experiencing housing insecurities to go through June 30th of 2025. So it's in effect an extension. And with that extension, we also need to provide or have some funds to be able to support the placement of those students past that extension.
So I'm sorry, what do you mean support? Can you unpack that? Is that like housing, getting them housing, getting them basic needs? What does that mean? It just says, "Fries Housing Assistance and Co-Located Housing-related Case Management." I just think for the benefit of the board and also the public, what we mean by that versus just one line explanation, just to help elucidate that.
Sure. So it's two-pronged. Those to provide rapid housing for those experiencing immediate and acute housing insecurity. So placement in beds. Secondly, for longer-term placement, Hovness provides support in trying to get them into longer-term housing. Hovness isn't intended to be long-term or permanent housing for our students. So it's helping with that transition into that permanent placement outside of Hovness.
Okay, I see. So the $650,000 that they want additionally, it's not their service fees. It's actually for the cost of the housing that the students will be placed in? Is that accurate?
So it's for the beds in the Hovness units?
I see. And how many beds?
So right now, I'm not sure of that exact number, but we can certainly provide more information as to who's currently using it and who we've supported in the past in terms of the numbers.
Yeah, it would be great if we can just put it in the explanation so that it's a little bit more clear. Because when you look at it at a glance, it's hard to tell what it's specifically used for. Thank you. Wow.
Thank you, Dr. Corral. I would also like to correct what I stated, that I did omit that that Item 8.12 also does have two additional contracts. I didn't turn the page. So even though Trustee Zia was asking about that particular contract, there are two additional ones on that. And all of those are attached to Board Docs for the benefit of the public. Any additional discussion on that item? All right. Madam Secretary, let's take a roll call vote on that, please.
Student Trustee Gonzalez.
Aye.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Herlinda Chico. Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Uduak Joe Untuck. Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. And Vice President Corral, will you be able to circulate that additional information to the rest of the board when you have it?
Would happy to. I'll share it with Michelle, and she could share it out to the board.
Thank you very much. Section 9 on the agenda, Human Resources. Item 9.1, LBCC FA Initial Bargaining Proposal to District: Reopen or Negotiations. This is an information item only. There's a lot of information regarding California Government Code Section 3547 requiring that all initial proposals of exclusive representatives in the district shall be presented at a public meeting of the Board of Trustees. All of that information is attached to the agenda and to Board Docs. For the benefit of the public, if you are interested in the specifics of Item 9.1, you know, I invite you to log on, and you can view the proposal. Item 9.2 is an employment contract. This is an action item. I need a motion and a second that the Board of Trustees approves the employment contract as submitted for the following employment contract, providing the employee with a term of employment, salary, along with health and welfare benefits and life insurance for Karen Covarrubias, Acting Director, Student Equity. This is a new hire position, term November 14, 2024 to February 28, 2025, with a salary of $30,668.25. Second. I've got a motion and a second by Trustee Untuck and Trustee Zia. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Section 10 on the agenda, Academic Senate. Item 10.1, Action on Modified and Inactivated Programs of Study Impacted by Cal G E T C. I need a motion and a second that the Board of Trustees approve the new modified and inactivated programs effective Fall 2025 as submitted. Item details and documents may be viewed on Board Docs.
So moves.
Second. I've got a motion by Trustee Untuck, second by Trustee Baxter. Any discussion?
I got a comment.
You have discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Trustee Untuck.
No, I'd just like to call out that this is a systems change that we're voting on tonight. When I was a student here in the 1990s, I was an IGETC student and never went to a UC. And had to, when I went to Long Beach State, had to retake lower division courses, even though I had an AA degree because I had the wrong transfer pathway. So eliminating what was formerly called the BNC track into one unified track is a systems improvement for our students. And so, you know, and just our students in the audience, if you don't know, if you transfer with an AA degree, you have almost a 60% more likely of finishing your bachelor's than if you transfer without your AA degree. And so this is helping students reach the bachelor's degree, which gives the economic opportunity, the bigger lifetime earning capacities. You actually live longer because you have health insurance. Research shows five to seven years longer you live if you have a bachelor's degree. And so there's real tangible benefits for our students that come from what might seem like a minor policy change or a minor administrative change. This is a big deal. I know it comes from state legislative changes that have driven this. So just wanted to shout that out for the Cal Get C.
Thank you for that, Trustee Untuck. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 10.2, the Cal G E T C General Education Pattern. This is an action item. I need a motion and a second that the Board of Trustees approve the submission of the California General Education Transfer Curriculum, Cal, it's the IGETC, G E T C pattern as submitted. Item details and documents may be viewed on Board Docs. We've got a motion by Trustee Untuck, second by Trustee Chico. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 10.3, New Modified and Inactivated Courses and Distance Learning Addenda. This is an action item. I need a motion and a second that the Board of Trustees approve the new modified and activated courses and distance learning addenda effective Fall 2025 as submitted. Item details and documents may be viewed on Board Docs.
So move.
Motion by Trustee Baxter, second by Trustee Untuck. All those in favor? Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 10.4, Information on Modified and Inactivated Programs of Study Impacted by Cal IGETC. This is an information item only. Item details and documents may be viewed on Board Docs. Item 10.5, New Modified and Inactivated Programs of Study. This is an action item. I need a motion and a second that the Board of Trustees approve the new modified and inactivated programs effective Fall 2025 as submitted. Item details and documents may be viewed on Board Doc. I've got a motion by Trustee Chico, second by Trustee Untuck. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 10.6, Plan A Modification. This is an action item. I need a motion and a second that the Board of Trustees approve the addition of course to General Education Plan A area as submitted. Item details and documents may be viewed on Board Docs.
So move.
Motion by Trustee Baxter, second by Trustee Untuck. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Section 11 on the agenda, Academic Affairs, no item. Section 12 on the agenda, Administrative and Business Services. We've already covered Item 12.1. Item 12.2, 2024/2025 CCFS 311Q, Q1 First Quarterly Financial Status Report. This is a motion item. I need a motion and a second that the Board of Trustees approve the 2024/2025 First Quarterly Financial Status Report for the Long Beach Community College District and authorize transmittal of the report to the California Community College Chancellor's Office as submitted. Item details and documents may be viewed on Board Docs.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Chico, second by Trustee Baxter. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 12.3, 2024/2025 First Quarter Budget Performance Report. This is an information item only. Item details and documents may be viewed on Board Docs. Section 13, Student Services, there are no items. Section 14, Board Reports. Section 14.1, Board Committee Reports. Trustee Untuck?
Yeah, I just want to say this concludes the ad hoc committee on the bond measure that Trustee Baxter and I served on. I think it comes to a conclusion, and we met a number of times. But one thing I wanted to do note is we're working on a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation to give at a future CCLC or trustee conference about what we did in our bond measure to kind of help other folks when they go on future years. So that'll be coming in the future.
I think that's a great idea. I actually received a few phone calls from neighboring community colleges who asked us, how did you guys get your bond measure to pass? How come you guys have three bond measures? And I said, talk to Uduak. That's the guy right there. All right, the only thing that I'd like to add to Section 14 is that, again, Trustee Baxter and I will be attending the Audit Subcommittee Meeting Monday, the 18th, 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. right here on campus. That will also be publicly posted on Board Docs. And we do have, anybody can attend. It's a Brown Act meeting, public comments, and the works. All right, Section 15 on the agenda, Public Comments on Non-Agenda Items. We do have several requests. I am going to call all of you by name if you would kindly line up. And please stick to the minutes that you are allotted to speak. Our first speaker is Belladonna Davis. Go ahead and line up, Belladonna. Our next speaker is Tony. Number three is Erin D. Number four is Alan. Number five is Park. Number six is Jonas. Number seven is Sky. Number eight is Parsa Sadehi. I hope I did not mispronounce your name. Please correct me if I did. Okay, welcome, Belladonna. Go right ahead.
Hello. Fear is a suffocating force. For Palestinians, that fear is based in lived experiences of senseless bombing, of torture, of being dehumanized and denied even the most basic of human decency. Being denied personhood, denied even a sense of home or a place of true genuine belonging. For those with the privilege of being unimpacted, that fear could be based in the idea that saying something challenging but true could result in a loss of stability. Loss of your career, loss of funding, loss of education, or simply just loss of comfort. As a student, LBCC is the first place I have ever truly felt empowerment in my educational ability. But each day, it seems that the cloud of fear looms heavier on students, the more we are made to live in uncertainty. I ask what it is we can do, what we are empowered to change for our students and for the larger community. A disclosure of investment from BlackRock, a structural demand, a policy to screen funds for weapon manufacturing, fossil fuel giants, and bonds from other countries known to violate human rights. I ask for support for students impacted by the forever-altering effects of genocide and to those students that could potentially be impacted by the instatement of Project 2025. Thank you.
Good evening. I don't have to employ ethos to get this message across. Everyone in this room should understand the current situation. Everyone in this room should understand what role the United States plays in this genocide. Financial support, billions of dollars of weapons and aid. This is not done by the government alone. Investments in bonds and fossil fuels, weapons manufacturers, corporations, and governments of nations committing severe human rights violations. We've called for transparency for LBCC's reports before. Now is the time to call for policy change. We want policies that prohibit investments of the sort in a committee that would employ these measures. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board of Trustees, Superintendent President, and faculty. My name is Erin, and I am a current student at Long Beach City College, as well as a policy and grassroots organizer with Noyar 9, a survivor-led organization that empowers students to end sexual and dating violence in their schools. Given the current state of Title IX and its major's impacts on students, I am here to offer my perspective and express my interest in collaborating with the board to better understand what these evolving regulations mean for students at LBCC. My hope is that we can ensure strong Title IX protections for everyone in the LBCC community and create a campus environment that fosters safety, inclusivity, and education on Title IX rights, especially in the face of ongoing uncertainty. As you may know, in April, the Biden administration finalized the Title IX rule that took effect on August 1st, strengthening protections against sex-based harassment and clarifying protections for LGBTQI+ students, as well as pregnant and parenting students. The new rule eliminates the requirement for live hearings with cross-examinations and disciplinary processes for sexual assault, granting campuses more flexibility to support survivors while upholding fairness. These changes also include a revised definition of sexual harassment, an extension of jurisdiction to off-campus incidents, and expanded protections against discrimination based on sexual orientation, gender identity, pregnancy, and parenting status. While this rule represents significant progress for student survivors, there has been pushback. 26 states have filed lawsuits challenging the new rule, and some states are exempt from compliance with these regulations. Although the state of California is not impacted by these lawsuits, a federal lawsuit against the Department of Education has led to an injunction that includes LBCC, prohibiting enforcement of these new protections at our institution. I encourage you to read the Hedgeson Reports article, "America's School and Colleges Are Operating Under Two Totally Different Sets of Rules for Sex Discrimination," to understand the scope of this injunction and the implications for LBCC. Additionally, the results of the presidential election create additional Title IX challenges, threatening students and staff's protection from sex-based harassment. Despite these challenges, I am committed to being part of the solution, helping to educate and unify the LBCC community regarding Title IX. I look forward to working with you to strengthen LBC's Title IX processes, support our campus community, provide critical resources, and promote a culture of respect and accountability during these uncertain times. Thank you for your time and consideration.
We students, alumni, and community members present you with an opportunity to join us in the fight for human life and health in Palestine and here at home. Every semester, we all load the rifle aimed at three-year-olds' heads. We drop the smart bombs on journalists' homes, and our participation earns us a buck. I have learned things in the last year that I can't live with. I was never meant to know that in a year, a people could be deleted and orphaned and disabled. I was not meant to know that it is in my school's best financial interests that we make and defend war, that in their silence, those who provide my education would be Palestinians Holocaust deniers. And I know it hurts you to hear that, but your official statement on Instagram remains proud and clear, denying decades of beating and taking and killing students and faculty, kids and people just like us all in this room. We implore you to please remove it. The dead from the last year are gone, and they are never coming back. But it is not too late to honor their lives. It is not too late to take back saying in so many words that they deserved it. It is not too late for us to come together to change our district's policies late for us to come together to change our district's policies to ensure we don't climb back into bed with killers ever again. This is not a bank for genocide that holds classes on the side. This is my and your school, our home. And nobody knows better than us that we cannot pay for one more bomb dropped on a school or for one more freshly graduated 20-year-old dead. And if this moment is anything, it's also our chance so we can protect our future. We beg you to continue what you've started with BlackRock divestment and write and approve policy to divest forever from weapons and from Israel. And we invite you to tell everyone in our community that that is the exact reasons why we amended our policies. Please take this opportunity and ensure that in the future, we no longer are able to divest, or to invest in fossil fuels, in corporations, and bonds from nations that are found to be in violation of human rights. And please support us as we target calpers and calsters in a similar campaign. Thank you.
Members of the board, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Parker Ellerton. I'm here with my peers to speak, to speak out against the ongoing genocide of the Palestinian people. My peers have done and will continue to do a good job at explaining why it is a genocide, so I will not be dwelling on it. But just know that we are not the only students here who care about these issues. We are simply the only ones that have bothered to come here to this board and speak up about it. As for why I am personally here, I know that this chapter of American history will be taught to our children, to my children, and God willing, my grandchildren. They're going to look at me, and they're going to ask, what did you do, Parker? What did you do during this troubling time? I feel proud that I'm going to tell them that I did not stay silent. I, excuse me, I commend this board for, I commend this board from, for divesting from BlackRock. Though the explanations for why are not given, I nonetheless think this action is good, though more does need to be taken. The second reason why I'm here is very personal. I am, I am a Christian. I believe in God, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, and I do so unapologetically. Unlike what God told Cain in Genesis, I hear, I hear this, I hear my brother's blood crying out from the ground. I hear the ugly screams, the ugly cries in Palestine. It's horrifying. The words cannot do it justice, and I don't think I even have enough time to do even a fraction of what I want, what I really want to speak out about. But I know that Jesus taught that turning your back on the oppressed people is to turn your back on God. Excuse me. If any of you are as God-fearing as I am, I hope you will do the same. And even if you don't fear God, or you fear a different God, I encourage you all to do the same. Finally, this board, this board meeting, this board meeting opened up with an acknowledgement of genocide done to the indigenous American population. I hope that this board will acknowledge genocides happening right now, going on in the future. Again, members of the board, thank you for allowing me to speak, and God bless all of you.
As of November 7, Israel has officially declared that Palestinians are not allowed to return to their homes in the northern cities of Gaza following the ongoing occupation and blockades in the area. The IOF took advantage of the entire world being too focused on the United States presidential election, and they declared their full invasion of northern Gaza. And this is not the first time that Israel has taken advantage of a major international event to further their genocide against the Palestinian people. And this is one of the major problems that we have. Israel takes advantage of you, of me, of everyone. And they take advantage of our discomfort with speaking up. They take advantage of your silence. The only person, the only side that is benefited by your silence is the side of the oppressor. No matter what, in every situation, full stop, if you remain neutral while there is genocide happening, you are siding with the oppressor. You cannot be neutral on genocide. Your silence is violence. Genocide is not normal. We shouldn't treat it like it is. We need to call it what it is. This is not a conflict. This is not something that's going on in the world right now. This is not anything other than genocide and ethnic cleansing. And you might ask, what can we as individuals, what can we even as an institution do about a genocide that's happening halfway around the world? And I would implore you to consider those who came before you and understand that you are never fighting as an individual. We are always together. We are always community. We are always people fighting with people for people. And one of the most powerful acts of resistance that you can perform is to say something. Upholding the status quo benefits the oppressor. Genocide cannot be normalized.
Hi. I'm just here as one more person to show my support for everything that everyone prior to me has said, and just to reiterate the points that all of them have made. So I'm one other person that's in support of making a permanent policy that will prohibit investments in fossil fuels, weapon manufacturers, and corporations, and government bonds that have been found to violate human rights, as well as, again, asking, asking one of you or all of you to get in contact with the people running the Long Beach City College Instagram account and ask them to delete the post that contains their statement on the war in Israel as it fails to acknowledge the war crimes committed by the Israeli government in Palestine. Thank you.
Good evening to the members of the board and to all in attendance today. My name is Parsa Sadehi, and I am currently enrolled at LBCC as a student veteran. I have recently served four years in the United States Army as a former combat medic. I was deployed to provide humanitarian aid for thousands of refugees fleeing Afghanistan. I have personally witnessed the casualties, the chaos, and the displacement caused during the withdrawal of US troops in Afghanistan, which ultimately resulted in the death of 13 Marines, well over 100 Afghan civilians killed, and over 100 Afghan civilians wounded. Dr. Mike Munoz and the rest of the board adopted a Framework for Reconciliation in Support of the Black Community, June 2020. This resolution is based on South Africa's post-apartheid truth and reconciliation process in the 1990s. However, South Africa has recently presented a case to the ICJ to, to hold Israel accountable for war crimes and crimes against humanity. Multiple human rights groups have recognized that what is happening in Palestine is genocide. It is apartheid, according to Amnesty International, Human Rights Watch, and Beth Shalom. What my question to the members of the board is, what is your framework for the reconciliation for Palestinian students or the Palestinian community at LBCC? And how will you go about putting forth its implementation? We always have to wait for a post-apartheid committee to recognize that what is happening is wrong, and the harm is wrong. Why can't LBCC simply recognize that the harm that is happening now to innocent civilians as we speak, why can't you recognize that? Why can't you recognize the genocide of innocent Palestinian lives, 60,000 innocent Palestinian lives that were taken, consisting 70% of women and children? Why can't you recognize that Palestinians have families and relatives, too, that attend LBCC? The only thing that LBCC has provided is an email simply threatening Palestinian protests on campus. I've been called a terrorist at this school. I've been told to go back to my own country. However, I served this country. I demand that LBCC retract their statements in support of Israel, and I demand that LBCC fully disclose finance and divest from companies linked to Israel.
Thank you. We will move on to section 16 on the agenda. There is no second closed session. Items, section 17 on the agenda is our adjournment. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Trustees will be held on Wednesday, December 18, 2024. Closed session will be at 4:30. Sorry, there's a bit of a typo here. Closed session will be at 4:30. Open session will be at 5:30. And at this time, I'd like to adjourn this meeting. It is 8:31 p.m. Thank you all for being here.